Good morning. We are, we will be getting started here pretty soon. Housing Authority and other legislative offices as well as executive offices were on a two-hour delay. Thanks for the nice moisture that we received and then also the icy conditions that are on the roadway. So we are still waiting for a number of other people to join us. So if you would like to warm up your coffee and get set up and then we'll get started here real soon. Yeah. Can you guys hear me pretty well? [Indonesian] [Indonesian] 2023 Nahazda Funds. [Indonesian] There are going to be three separate presentations this morning. And those particular present, those presentations are going to be dealing with the Indian Housing Plan as it pertains to the Nahazda 2023 projected allocation of funds. We will be talking about the basics of a Nahazda. And then after that, we will be talking about, or there'll be a presentation on the Indian Housing Plan, presented by Ms. Nellie Gilmore as it relates to the Indian Housing Block Grant. And then we will conclude with a presentation by Construction, Division of Construction Services. They will be presenting their presentation on the development and as to how they work with various chapters. The information that we will be sharing with you, they are on the web. And you should be able to access the presentations and utilize that for distribution and sharing with your community members or your fellow coworkers. The emphasis of this particular presentation is to get a wide range of information from various communities and chapters. There are a number of communities that are out there that are not operated under the chapter government. Some chapters are identified as certified chapters and they have local governance. Tubus City as an example, Steamboat as an example, and then also Chin Lee as an example. They are self-governance. And then also we have other forms of government, AFOG. And we have two townships. One particular township is in Kieta Township, Kieta, Arizona. The chapter is a set aside from that particular township. And then also in Red Lake, New Mexico, the community of Navajo. Their particular township is also a local government for community members to access and then also to utilize their particular services. Ms. Gloria, you have a question before we get started? [Indonesian] Then also I do have a question before we get started from Gloria as well. There's a question mark on the screen, so if you'd like to ask a question, then we'll go ahead and ask you. Let me pause right here. I will turn off the mic and then also the camera, but we will start within the next few minutes. [Indonesian] As I had mentioned early on, up here on Navajo, for those of you that may be off Navajo, we did have a two-hour delay due to the weather conditions. And then also a number of our folks do travel two hours or more from various areas to come to work and the icy conditions basically slows everybody down. And we want to acknowledge that for some of those staff members that are traveling a great distance to come to their offices. So for that reason, we had a two-hour delay. Navajo Nation Executive and the Legislative Office also had a two-hour delay. Good morning. My name is Earl Thule, working with Navajo Housing Authority. I'm the Vichy Liaison with the Executive Office and I'll be participating in this presentation this morning. Other team members will be joining me as their particular topic does come up. And just for clarification, in regards to the topic this morning, we will be talking about the Indian Housing Plan as it relates to the Indian Housing Block Grant. And that information that we will be, the information that we will be sharing with you is going to be related to those topics. There have been other attendees and other participants who have mentioned some of the questions that they have about the operation of Navajo Housing Authority or its application process. At this time, we will only focus on the Indian Housing Plan. And from that, you will hear some new, I guess your vocabulary will be, hopefully will include some of these new acronyms that we will be sharing with you in hopes that you also may become a participant or also a recipient as well. I would like to go ahead and get started off with the amount of numbers that are, the amount of numbers or the funding amount that we do have that is estimate coming through in regards to the fiscal year 2023. Eighty-nine million, eighty-two, eighty-two point nine million has been allocated. Thirty point nine million is to assist with the current assisted stock, meaning the housing stock. And also what we do have is that the portion of the planning and administration, that portion of the funding is 12.4. As far as the needs in regards to the activity will be coming forth. And we would like to, those activities include some of the housing developments of 39.5. What we would like to do before we really delve into the presentation is that we'd like to have introductions. If you would like to introduce yourself and let us know a little bit about where you're coming from. You may be coming off Navajo or would like to become a partner with Navajo Housing Authority, the TDHE.
Good morning. My name is Lorena Hallwood. I am [Indonesian] I am the Executive Director for Amato Chino Bolan Incorporated in Chin Lee. We are a 24-hour crisis program assisting victims of domestic violence and sexual assault rate victims in Chin Lee and surrounding areas of the Navajo Nation. That's who I am. Yeah.
Oh. [Indonesian] You should be able to see the PowerPoint presentation. Is it on your screen? I will assume that it is on your screen, so I will go ahead and turn the camera off and then go into the presentation. And then I will have, we will have a Q and A session at the end. Again, as I had mentioned, there are three topics that we will be covering. Nahazda, the basics of Nahazda, Native American Housing Assistance and Self-Determination Act of 1996. Thereafter, we will have another presentation by Ms. Nellie Gilmore. She will be presenting on the Indian Housing Block Grant. And then concluding the presentation on this, at this session, we will have two gentlemen, Mr. Ernest Franklin and Mr. Dwayne Wissera. They will be presenting on the development aspect of planning, the development, and then also the construction activity. [Indonesian] The 24 CFR 1000, yeah, 24 CFR 1000. [Indonesian] You could Google that and you should be able to pull up the regulation, also the statutes. So in regards to the reflection on the Indian housing in the past, the past allocation of fundings came through from the 1937 Housing Act. And then that started from 1937 to 1963. 1963, the Tribal Council recognized the Navajo Housing Authority as an entity to work with Navajo families on expanding housing. May 1st, 1963, Tribal Council submitted a resolution and a request to HUD. On the initial request in 1963, May 1st, 2,000 homes were requested by our leaders in the Tribal Council at that time. And that's what started off the Navajo Housing Authority housing developments. As you take a look at, you know, the time span from 1937 to 1963, it was a number of years, a number of decades before Navajo Housing or Navajo families were able to benefit from the 1937 Housing Act. From 1963 to 1996, a new formula was set up. And the new program is called the Native American Housing Assistance and Self-Determination Act. That particular act was instituted when President Clinton was the President of the United States. And the short end of that particular act is that there were a number of Indian tribes going to Washington DC. Indian tribes that were represented by senior citizens, those individuals who are veterans as well was going up to the, to Washington DC requesting housing for veterans. And then also we had other individuals that were going up to Washington DC and meeting with the congressional members for various housing needs. And so at the time, the act basically indicated that, well, Indian tribes, you don't really all have to come to Washington DC. What we will do is we will make a collaboration and we will collaborate with tribal governments. We will allocate one funding source for all Indian tribes that will come through the Tribal Council, the president, or the leaders of the, of the particular tribe. And from that came about as far as the TDHE, Tribal Designated Housing Entity. So Washington basically indicated tribes, you don't have to come. You will designate an entity within the confines of your entities and your tribal governments. And then the funding source will be allocated through the nation to the TDHE, who will be compiling the Indian Housing Plan on behalf of Indian nations. So with that, there were a number of people that had special needs, those that were visually impaired, hearing impaired, those are in wheelchairs. And then as well as senior citizens, car accident care, and then some of our relatives with special needs that reside in group homes. And then also there were other activities as far as police activities. And they basically are part of this Nahazda. We will go into that later on. And then as far as the statutes, we will have a review of those, some of those laws that are there, some of those laws that are instituted that we have to follow as to how the funds are going to be distributed among tribal members and then also tribal organizations. And once that is done, then you will have a greater idea as to how funding sources come through, federal funds, federal regulations, and federal statutes come into play. So basically, a number of people may understand that or say to themselves that this is a grant. You should be able to allocate those funds at your particular leisure. But as it is with any federal funding source, there are strings attached. And so those strings are some of the areas that we will be sharing with you this morning. So basically, the past, the Board of Commissioners is established under Navajo Housing Authority. The Board of Commissioners are, there are five Board of Commissioners here on the Navajo Nation. Currently Chairman Sloan from the Tubus City or Western Agency is a member of the Board of Commissioner. And then Commissioner Carey Begay is the Secretary Treasurer. And then a member is Commissioner Yasi. Three individuals currently occupy the Board of Commissioners. Two vacancies are present at the present time. And then we will go into the next aspects of publication. HUD publishes an ordinance as to what the powers of the BOC is, the Board of Commissioners. And from that, the BOCs have, the BOC, the Board of Commissioners have bylaws that govern as to how the rules are and the rules of the meeting, and then also their particular roles. And so that also begins to include as to how the programs are instituted in regards to the funds that do come in and then also the roles and responsibility that Navajo Housing Authority may have within the respective chapters and entities of the Navajo Nation Government. The acronym of HA is Housing Authorities. Across the, across the United States, there are 500 and about 23 tribes, almost 530 tribes that are out there. The amount of funds that have been allocated to Indian tribes for, through Nahazda has been 650 million. And that came into play for a very, very long time. And then recently it was increased. So if you were to divide 523 into 650, there is not enough money to distribute to meet all the needs. And so there are other opportunities as far as leveraging is concerned, and I will go over that as well. So that the housing authorities across Indian country, they manage pretty much low-income rental and mutual help housing programs. So if you are in Tubus City and you go to Coeur d'Alene, more than likely you will see similar houses that were built with the 1937 Housing Act. And one set of plans was pretty much carried out through all of Indian country in the earlier days. Once that was completed, Indian Housing Authorities or Housing Authorities, they compete for new construction. As far as modernization and modernization grants were also allocated to modernize some of those homes in the 1937 Housing Act. Modernization programs were pretty evident across Indian housing programs. And some of you may understand a little bit about that in regards to development with the 1937 Housing Act. Now with the new act that has been instituted, the Native American Housing Assistance and Self-Determination Act of 1996 was instituted. And that is under the public law of 104, 330. And what it does is, is that it reauthor, it was reauthorized in 2008 through 2013. And recently it was reauthorized again in February 2022, which is last month. So it has been reauthorized again. It's a continuing resolution that operates the Indian Housing Block Grant or the Nahazda. The funds that come through Nahazda, this is the funds that is earmarked that would bring in the funds for housing entities and then also for improvements and renovation activities and the like. The tribe benefits from this grant. As I had mentioned, it's a grant, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it is free distribution of money. And so the tribes were given self-determination, and tribes were able to determine as to how, who the grant recipients are going to be. And the TDHE, which is Navajo Housing Authority, will receive proposals. And a little later on during the presentation that is going to be made by Ms. Kilmore, she will go into a little bit about the responsibility of the TDHE, the Grants Management Department, and how funds are allocated. And I would like to have you understand that. So as a grant recipient, these are entities that are that have been identified to receive Nahasta funding. The oversight of the Board of Commissioners is the RDC, Resources Development Committee members. And the Indian Housing Plan is compiled together. It is approved by the Board of Commissioners. The resolution is then forwarded over to RDC for certification. And then it goes to the Office of the President. President Nas will sign the document. And so that's how the protocol of executing that particular Indian Housing Plan. There are some deadlines and there are some dates. We will go over that a little later on in the in the presentation. These funds, the Indian Housing Block Grants, those funds are to be utilized for eligible activities. There are some eligible activities that will be shared with you as far as some of the activities that communities have been doing and some of the recipients that are out there. And those recipients basically are operating as an entity of their own, but monitored by the monitoring department of the Indian, the Indian Housing Block Grant, the Indian Housing Plan. There are regulations that are there in regards to as to how we're going to monitor. Monitoring basically means the proposal is submitted, it is approved, and then they become the recipient, they become a recipient of the plan that they have submitted. From there, they will perform their particular task and duties. And then after a year, there is a reporting period, and that reporting period is the annual performance report. How did they perform in regards in carrying out the Indian Housing Plan? X amount of homes may have been indicated on the Indian Housing Plan. The annual performance will report how many homes were built or how many homes are outstanding. And then also if there are any issues or problems in regards to the area that they may be developing in, and that may have hampered their particular progress. The next aspect of this is the guiding principles. The federal, the federal government's responsibility is to promote the general welfare of Indian nations. And there is a unique relationship in that particular agreement with Navajo, with Navajo Nations or other Indian nations with the US government. And this is the responsibility, in a sense that it is unique for the federal government, that it has with Indian governments. And our particular document is the Treaty of eighteen sixty-eight. That is the unique agreement that the federal government does have. Some of the other federal programs that are out there are Head Start. And then also the Indian Health Services that that is on Navajo and other tribal nations. And then some of the other unique responsibility as far as what are the responsibility of the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And there are fundings that do come through the Indian Health Service as well as the immediate medical care, and then also the infrastructure as far as freshwater, wastewater. And then and those activities that would relate to the general health and welfare of the Navajo people here. There are the following three items that are here is is that Nahasta, as a guiding principle, it is to provide affordable homes in a in safe and healthy environments as an essential element. Yeah, one of the areas that I would like to share with you is is with the current pandemic that is across the nation and across the world. Currently here on Navajo, you may have heard the executive office as well as the legislative office noting that forty percent of the Navajo Nation do not have access to potable water or infrastructure, indoor facilities. And in the earlier days of nineteen sixty, sixty-three, I believe it is, when President Kennedy was president. In regards to Dr. Anuwenika and her particular advocacy for tuberculosis and then also to remedy that particular ailment. Affordable housing activities. ADI, that is the mission of Navajo Housing Authority is to provide affordable housing. And then also with its partners, they're able to fulfill that responsibility in various capacities. We are working with a number of other entities that are out there. We've worked with the Navajo Veteran Affairs Office. And then also we have worked with SWIFT, Southwest Indian Foundation, and who have partnered with the military branch. And during the summer, military, various military branches will be coming over to Gallup, and they will be constructing homes for families that Southwest Indian Foundation have selected. There are other opportunities as well to plan and develop for private housing. As Nahasta, there are regulations in regards to income qualifications as well. And we will go over that in this presentation. But I just wanted to share this portion of it to share with you that Nahasta does make gateway, and there is a door that is open to provide financial housing for private entities that are out there. We have a number of our families that are participating in various parts of the country, and they are taking part in the mortgage opportunities that is afforded to them. And due to the other responsibilities that those individuals may have as far as occupation or profession, they're not able to reside here with us on Navajo Nation. So there's a good portion of our population residing in other populated areas such as Phoenix, Albuquerque, Denver, Salt Lake, as well as Los Angeles. And so the federal assistance basically recognizes that Indian tribes and Indian nations do have an open door in regards to self-determination as well as self-governance as well. And so this is made known into a lot of Indian country with public law six thirty-eight, which is where we're able to self-govern and also provide opportunities as to how the Navajo Nation would like to steer their particular economic development and then also community growth as well. Those are the guiding principles. Now, the objectives. I mentioned twenty-four CFR one thousand. If you were to open up to section one or two zero one, section two zero one, you will find the objectives. And the objectives is to assist and promote affordable housing activity, development, maintenance, operation, and then also for occupancy of low-income families. So oftentimes, we have a number of families that do turn away from asking for or looking into or even applying for housing, thinking that they're to create inroads and avenues for private mortgage opportunities here on tribal land. There are a number of different lands that are across Navajo Nation. We have trust land. We have fee land. We have Indian allotments that are that are present. And then also there are properties that have been purchased by the tribal government. There are some communities that will not have development in them because of the regulation or the laws that have been instituted by by the tribal government or even at the federal level. Those families that are residing in Monument Valley, families that are living in Monument Valley or even in the natural park areas across Navajo Nation, there are barriers out there for them, and therefore they may not get infrastructure or new houses built out there. Some of the families that are residing in those national park areas, they are residing in Hogans and the traditional lifestyle that families have been introduced to, and they are continuing that particular lifestyle. The other activity is is to promote economic activities. As far as economic activities, there is some limitation into that as well. And I will cover that a little later on. And and the communities may have opportunities to grow their communities. And I'll give you one example is out in Crown Point, Crown Point area as well as over in Cornfields, Arizona. Cornfields Chapter have ended, have set aside one hundred acres to develop economic and community development for their family and then also for their neighbors. The one hundred acres that is allocated, it's for developing seed stores and then other service opportunities as far as administrative buildings. Twenty-three acres of the one hundred acres that have been set aside is for development. So in in light of that, what I would like to share with you presently is is whether it is an acre of land on trust land or an acre of land on trust land as well, one acre or a hundred acres, the same amount of paperwork is required as far as clearances for biological aspect of it, and then also for the environmental aspect of it, and then also for the approval by the historic preservation. They all go through the same process, whether it's a half an acre or a hundred acres. So we encourage community members and chapters and local leaders to withdraw and then build and develop in phases. There are a number of areas where communities have developed, and they all need the same infrastructure. And as I had mentioned, the executive office as well as the legislative office during this particular pandemic indicated and noted that forty percent of the Navajo population do not have access to indoor facility or facilities and indoor plumbing. We would like to promote capital markets as well, yeah, private capital markets on Indian country. There are opportunities, and I will go into that as far as what are some of the other opportunities that are out there. And basically, that could include a development that I would like to share with you. Over in the Shiprock area, six point three acres, ninety-six units was developed in a high-density development on six point three acres, ninety-six units. And the growth area, being one of the growth areas, Shiprock needed a number of rental units and in various capacities because they had a number of different people that were coming in. And so that is a blended income, high income and low income development. The the finance vehicle that made it possible to develop that development ten years ago or eleven years ago is New Mexico Finance and Mortgage USDA and Nahasta Funding. Nahasta Funding amounted, as far as the contribution amounted to three million dollars. Eleven million dollars came from a private, private source or a non-tribal source. So those are some of the activities that you as community members can advocate for and then also welcome that opportunity. And the Nahasta statutes, you've got Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Title Five, Title Four, Title Five, Title Six, Title Seven, Title Eight. The block grants, there are requirements, affordable housing activities, there are requirements. And then also protocols that we have to follow. And then the allocation of grant amounts. The greatest area here is is to make sure that the funding that does come through Navajo Nation, through Nahasta, through TDHE to the Navajo Nation and its families that are residing on the Navajo Nation, we have to ensure that there is compliance, that audits are conducted, and that reports are issued in regards to the funding that the individual entity or recipient in regards to the funding that the individual entity or recipient may have realized. And then Title Six, nneniki. Federal guarantees for financing tribal housing activities. Eydi ki eya. This is the area where the private market can come in and assist with growing the housing stock for Navajo families. Currently, we have a number of our families that are utilizing the vehicle to purchase their homes. And you may have seen this as you're coming home or crisscrossing the Navajo Nation. You'll see that there are a lot of modular homes or trailer homes that have been, that are there and that families are benefiting from that as well. And so some of those homes that are purchased by our Navajo families is made possible through a funding source. So the only opportunity that many of our Navajo families have is to have a home on wheels. Hawana basa. Eydi teya jo eh chidana hatno. Hu tego eya ban sah kesnla. So those modular homes have a vehicle VIN number, vehicle identification number. And therefore, it is considered a vehicle. And therefore, you're able to secure financing for that. And those homes that are foundations, dand nneniki. That could save them a lot more money on interest rates. And so financial literacy is an opportunity that entities and partners can provide our Navajo families. Equidoki grant requirement, ischneniki. Block grant, ki eya. There is an annual amount that I had mentioned. The estimate for 2023 is eighty-two point nine million. Of that eighty-two point nine million, thirty point nine million is allocated for maintenance and operation of current homes that are occupied by families. And then twelve point four million is set aside for planning and administration. The needs aspect of it, thirty-nine point five million, that is made available to grow the housing stock or activities in regards to what is submitted with the Indian Housing Plan. This is a requirement. This is a plan. And I just want to emphasize that. Onhat at e tati tati nix. Tatej nishtoa ni git nesetiko ondetta eya ey behosanidoli. The reason that this is a plan is that it gives us an opportunity to share with HUD as to how the funding will be utilized. Ado ondetta eya, the review of plans, dand nneniki. I will give you due dates on this. I will give you the amount of days that HUD has in reviewing this particular document. Ado ondetta. Out of all these, one through eight, out of all of them, this is the main vehicle that governs the funding source as to when you turn the key and development starts. And that is not done until this environmental review has been signed off by the Office of the President. And release of funds, that is the vehicle that engages the development process. Ako eydi teya hu te. And then our fiscal year runs from October first. That is our New Year's Day as far as the funding source is concerned. There are other tribes that have the new year, the calendar year, has their particular funding cycle. Neniki eya ey. Gaja ash ayokat. Ado ondetta eya kaha tishinleko. Endetale kum di ki ngichihana aniki eya. Kum. Ahhu tego eya behosani daholo. Akohati di ki eya ey hansh sabashin eya ayisikkehuna ah gu kwado hu te. Hu tego da anishinleko. Kwado beso ki nahadetah ateho wando eh yeha van. Nahah teho eya kum debeso cheteta. On an annual basis, Congress identifies the Indian block grant funds. From that, information HUD allocates according to various formulas that they have. I shouldn't say various formula. There's only one mathematical formula that is there and as to how Indian tribes get the funding. Navajo Nation receives a good portion or the lion's share. Ayisie eya. Beso ki eya ku cha eya. Nahana natetah nzeko. Akohoya eya onkes behosanidoli. And then after this, allocation of funds. Grant recipient draw down the funds. So beso ki geto kum diya. Kum det, is this being ushosa, the ischneniki. Oftentimes, many of our individual community members or some of the other families or individuals of leadership are inquiring of Navajo Housing Authority. Yes, you guys are sitting on a lot of money. Well, the money is not here physically. It is through this line of credit control system, locks. And those funds can be only allocated for these housing activities that have been noted in the Indian Housing Plan. Ako eydi teya hu te o onahana kibehosanidoli. Di beso chetetah nneniki eya epetse ishtlisi. Bikene etaniki do hansh so sheya. Kum di ki eya baho. Ki eyi ki eya beso ki bichihana ni. As I had mentioned, there are approximately five hundred and thirty, five hundred and twenty-three, right around that area. There are federally recognized tribes, treaty tribes, and also recognized tribes that are out there, sovereign tribes that are out there. And then sometimes, there are new tribes that are added to that particular tribal membership role that is recognized by the federal government. Ado ondetta bekeon na nan nneniki. The funds then go through the TDHE. And then the TDHE is the individual or the individual party that participates. We have had other entities that have come in and assisted in the past. We have had Navajo Housing Authority personnel in the Grants Management Department. We've had the Executive Office. The Office of the President would send a representative. And then also, we've had past experience with the Speaker's Office sending a representative. So decisions are not made in silo. As I had mentioned, when a plan is put together, the Indian Housing Plan is presented to the Board of Commissioners. They will review, approve, or if they have objections or they would like a little bit more information, it is the opportunity for them to be informed of it before the next, before the document goes to the next review source, which is the RDC Resource Development Committee. At the Resource Development Committee, it is presented in resolution form. They have opportunity to examine that particular document and review that particular document before they approve. And then, once it is acted upon by the RDC, then it will be ready for signature by the Office of the President, who also has a, have a team. Their legal personnel will also take a look at that document before the president signs off and it is sent off to HUD for acceptance. Ako eydi teya kui ge hu te. Ado ondetta bekeon na nan nneniki eya behosani, ischneniki. Title One, ischnenaki. Eyi ki eya ku tego ki eya. Krakeki ki eya bada. As far as the Indian Housing Plan, nneniki. We have to create a need. There's got to be a statement of need. This is where you as individual chapters as well as entities or partners with Navajo Housing Authority, we will establish a need. As at the introduction, we had one party indicating that they are working with an entity that is established in Chinley, Arizona, and they provide services to a population of Navajo with needs. And so that could be included in here as well. Some of those needs might be domestic violence shelters, daycare centers, as well as senior citizens or convalescent homes, group homes. Ta ta te. Eku ekiki eya eh hoti nleko. Once that identified need is known, then it is put into a statement. And then the activities then go in from there. As far as what are some of the goals and objectives, dand nneniki. What is the outcome if they receive this funding? And what will be the nature of it? Navajo Housing Authority and the TDHE, the funding source of the Indian Block Grant, yeah. Indian Housing Block Grant. Eyda ich nneniki eya. It is only the structure and then also activities related to affordable housing activities. Eydi ki eya ku ekiki eya beho tash nleidoli. Ado ondetta eya kum di ki shashi do ku echitati. Nneki ishto pe hoti. Funding can be leveraged in a sense of, let's say, for instance, there are opportunities to borrow against the amount that is allocated. And I will go into that pretty soon. And then there is a certificate of compliance. Oh, edya do ku tego eya bikene etah. And then the tribal certification statement is the tribal certification is the signature of the RDC Chairman as well as the Office of the President. They sign off and they certify on behalf of Navajo. As I had mentioned, when is the Indian Housing Plan due? It is due July eighteenth every year. That date does not move. It is always on the eighteenth. Ado ondetta. If it is on a weekend or a holiday. Eydi ki sheya nasetahya. They will know and they will inform. Ako eydi teya. Twelve o'clock, midnight, July eighteenth. It has to be due and submitted in electronic format or it could be sent through the mail. But in our particular era, these days, everything is done electronically. So it's seventy-five days. Now, if you count seventy-five days, eydi ki eya, from here, you will reach October first. And those dates are the ones that function as far as milestones. Ta ta te. Ado ondetta eya, from this July eighteenth, sixty days. Eydi ki eya. Within sixty days, HUD will review the particular Indian Housing Plan. And they have that opportunity. And they will respond back to the individual or the individual tribe that submitted the Indian Housing Plan. Naite kero shin ishto nada ite doli. So with federal funds, federal regulations, ischneniki. Ni pa. National Environmental Policy Act, nneniki of nineteen sixty-nine. Itate yabene behosani eyya. Roughly, what is that? One hundred and one years after the Treaty of eighteen sixty-eight. Itati di ki behosani eyya. Eydi ki eya mikahui noh ido doli. Ado ondetta ti di ki eya. Di ku ekiki eya. The tribe can request to HUD to complete the environmental responsibility. Eydi ki ku ekiki. Navajo Housing Authority submits a resolution to the Tribal Council requesting this aspect of it. Ado ondetta. Qaila ilneh nneniki eya. Twenty-four CFR. We're asking for permission, and this is what we're going to do. If this is not done, then HUD will have that responsibility, and it will take a long time. So in order to expedite and expend the funds that have been made available, then we take that responsibility on behalf of the Navajo Nation. Ako eydi ki teya ey di kuchiko behosani, ischneniki. Ekua keh should they need in. So Navajo Housing Authority utilizes Part fifty-eight before any funds are expended. This portion has to be completed. When it is completed, then the release of funds is going to be executed and it will be signed off. And then utilization of those funds will be made possible. Ado ondetta lambekeon na nan nneniki ishto ya. Di di ki ayisikku ekiki eya. It's mentioned here, and this is the process right here. The environmental release of funds. Eydi ki eya, as it relates to construction activities, nneniki. Ek kuchiko ki behosani. Ey adi kishinda sohkat. Ado ondetta sidi yahan so deyeyo behosani tabekitaski. Et sabikaski ey behosani. Ado ondetta le ade. Danase ekita sto. Ey bikana taski nleko. So as far as the other biological aspects of it, we have the Endangered Species Act. And then also, there are endangered species as far as plants are concerned. Ako eydi teya epetahast. We want to make sure that we have development where we will not jeopardize the integrity or the biological life, wildlife that is out there. Eydi teya hu te. Now to Title Two, nneniki. Affordable Housing Activities, yeah. The objectives, nneniki ekua ekiki yidish khanusinko. Ke eya, section two zero one. Out of the twenty-four CFR one thousand, ischneniki. Qaila eya ey kum di ki yita haydona lto. Qaila eya ayisiba alchehui dilnig. Ado onda haila lto halitota anishigi nan lto. Ey di ki eya behosanidoli. Ado ondetta be ku ekibe shvadniti. Aniki do halitoa eya nebetsata hastla ya hado oneliki. Ey di ki eya at ede kuda at eko. So in regards to the national objectives, the items that I had previously mentioned, then basically, that is an activity related to affordable housing. From those affordable housing activities, then there are program requirements. Some of those program requirements is that, do you have an application process? Do you have an admission process? Do you have a grievance process? Do you have an agreement? And then also, as far as how do you select your individual tenants and families to reside in these particular homes? Housing Authority utilizes the preference points. Ek kui de eya hu te. Ado ondetta bekeon na nan nneniki. Eligible families, ischnenek. Jaten lid. Chetahuit aneta chihona aneta eya. Low income. Ado onda income-driven, ischneniki. Eku ekie banahor jishinla. So the gauge that we use is the area median income. Those families that are eighty percent and below, they are eligible, yeah. I know that I will mention it. And then it will be mentioned again in the other presentations, nneniki. Qaila orliel ebichahor korchish. We can also provide preference as well for those families that are residing in homeownership homes of Navajo Housing Authority. There is a preference for tribal members to be recipients. We have blended families. We have other ethnic groups that are family members within our various communities. Ta ta eya. Ilakanado. Ado nakrigijeni do. Zedot na hokhaten. Zedot ikuisi ilhat ego ki eya kum. Eyehetan lidon jaatetan le. Ey ba hoti. Hu te enda napehun. Lneki bejhunloneki. Ey di ki eya ey laja bijisso doli. Ey hu te. The other preference as far as other Indian members living within the jurisdiction of Navajo Nation, that is allowable. And but they won't gain the homeownership opportunity. However, as long as they are there as a mom or as a father, then they are eligible to participate. But standalone, they will not be able to qualify. It has to be a tribal member. Now, the other aspect of that is that chapter members. Chapter, they have to be chapter members. And chapters have passed resolution indicating that those individual families that will be participating in the homeownership program under Navajo Housing Authority, they will have to be chapter members. They will have to be enrolled members. They will have to be voting members of the chapter before they are qualified. As far as public rental, public rental is open to the public. We have other non-Navajo families that have participated in the public rental program. Also, we could make preference for elders. Preference points. For those that are disabled and veterans. And those are some of the examples as far as preferences that could be made. Let's say they're making more than the threshold that has been set aside by the area median income. They exceed that goal. We can assist those families up to 10% of the grant amount in the Indian Housing Plan. But they cannot receive the same assistance as the low-income family. As far as in regards to this, our families that are residing in homeownership homes, we calculate their payments up to 15% of their family income. Any family member over the age of 18 years old residing in the home, they will be part of that annual family income. And this one here, we cannot take no more than 15% for homeownership, 20%, but we can go up as high as 30%. A number of families that may be residing off the Navajo Nation, perhaps more than 50% of their income is for housing-related expenses. Ours is 20% and 15%. So if we're charging a family 15% over here, we got to charge the family more than that because they cannot receive the same assistance as a low-income family. And what that means is that we can charge them the fair market rate within the county that they do live in. So that's how the calculations are done. Or we have ceiling rates too. And then also those that are over the income guideline limits of 100%. We need to get HUD's approval. We have doctors, we have other people and other professions that are out there where you have dual incomes and high-income families that are residing here. If they would like to reside within the housing development and be able to be participating in the homeownership program, they would be essential families. So if they're in law enforcement, if they are in the school system, if they are in the medical field, they exceed the 100% and they are essential as determined by the tribe and approved by HUD, they can participate in this particular homeownership program. The area median income. There are counties out there. We utilize these area median income for some of the programs that we do have right now, such as the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. They would be in the county that they are residing in. These annual incomes, they are executed on a yearly basis. On a yearly basis. Two years ago, the US median income for a family, I believe it's going to be four, was $79,900. So this next one here, it will show you that this is the area median income for this particular year. Two years ago. So every April, that document does come forth, and it is updated. Let's say for instance, in 2019. The latest one that we have is 2021. So if you have a family, a single-person family, their income, if they make $44,744 or less, they are considered low-income families. Now, if their income is $45,000, then they fit this particular range right here. And they would be the non-low-income family. Now, the high-income family over the 100% threshold is that, let's say for instance, they make $56,000 a year as a single person. For a family of four, if they make $63,920, less than that, they qualify as low-income families. Non-low-income families would be if they earn in a family of four, $64,000, but not exceeding this. So a number of our families, especially here on the Navajo Nation, a lot of families are in service-related jobs. Public service. You know, a lot of them are working in the hotels or guides. And basically, they could qualify here. So a number of families basically will say that that's only for low income. But this is the threshold that we utilize as an income bracket. What are the eligible housing activities? These are some of the areas that we can take a look at. As far as the current assistance stock, as I had mentioned, 82.9 million is estimated for 2023. If we utilize this particular amount for the current assistance stock, 30.9 million is allocated for this area right here. For new construction activities, this is what they will do. It will cover new construction activities under development, reconstruction, or even some of those rehabilitation, or even acquisition. So Indian Housing Assistance Development, these are the aligned items that are there. Housing Services. Housing Counseling. Let's say for instance, it'd be financial literacy. Is it as it relates to affordable housing activities? Resident Organizations. Let's say for instance, a housing development. The families that are residing in a housing authority housing development, they can organize themselves as a resident organization and certified by the local chapter and recognized by the local chapter. And then they can grow into resident management corporation. And they can manage their own particular properties. We have had some individual communities or subdivisions that have utilized this particular aspect of it. So that is Title II. Model Activities. There are some homes that we have built for student housing over at Crown Point. It's what is it? Navajo Technical University. We've done daycare. We've done daycare Little Miss Muffet in Navajo. And then also Little Feet up in Wharfano area. Boys and Girls Club Activities. Senior Housing Development, our senior centers. Model Activities. Financing Acquisition of Affordable Housing by Homebuyers Down Payments. Childcare. Transportation subsidies. Job Trainings. For those individual families that are residing in housing development areas. And I'll give you an example. Let's say for instance, at the group home, some of those relatives that are there, they're able to perform a task in a job. And if you'd like to train them. Let's say for instance, you have a development area where families need to be gainfully employed, but they need daycare services. These are the management services. Crime Prevention, some of the activities that we have done in public rental housing is fencing, auto security, like speed bumps. Office Building Retrofit. As I had mentioned, those individuals that may be wheelchair-bound, visually impaired, or hearing impaired. We have to retrofit some of the, let's say for instance, the insurance telephone systems, some things of that nature. Let's say for crime prevention. If you become a sub-recipient or would like to have your own, let's say for instance, the Navajo Technical University, they have their own selection as to who will be in the dormitory. They have a policy for those students that will be there. You have to be going to school. You have to be carrying X amount of load or credits per semester. Maintenance Policy. You will have to have that particular document in place. Adequate Insurance. The structure is, could be utilized utilizing the HOZDA funds. You have, you may have other contribution for other services to take care of the personnel that are going to be there. And then also, they may part, cover part of your insurance as well. And then also the policy up here, as I had mentioned. Who is eligible? How are they admitted? And then how will they conduct themselves while they're living there? In regards to a maintenance policy on top of that would be is, you know, if you hire personnel, is there a personnel policy? Grievance Policies, how do you resolve those conflicts that are there? Procurement, how are you going to be making purchases? Large and small. Annual Allocation is done by Congress, submitted to HUD. And then there's a formula. This is where you will come in as an entity as to sharing your particular needs. That becomes a factor. Before you exit, then we will ask the entity to perform their report as to why they may have had difficulty. It could be for a number of reasons. It could be they lost their lease or something of that nature as to where they were residing. Or it could be an area where there is a change in administration. A change in organization. The Secretary of HUD, Secretary Fudge is our particular Secretary for Housing Urban Development. Office of Native American Programs. Government Accounting Office. They will have access to. We have to make that known as well. And we do that through the electronic format, through the process of entertaining their particular questions. And I am certain that if there is an individual out there that would say, "I need it in Braille." Maybe a person who is hearing impaired. This is probably the most interesting part. And we have yet to fully maximize the guaranteed loan program. We can borrow up to 5% of the allocated amounts. We would have to follow through this aspect of this. We would have to follow through this aspect of this and then HUD would guarantee the particular payment. Cool. We can get a loan up to five percent of the, I mean, five times the amount. I don't that that loan is going to be up to 20 years. We can leverage these funds in regards to mortgage activities. The US Treasury tax credits. USDA. Working with the Indian Health Services or other private sources as bonding. So this is the area that we would need partners in regards to off Navajo or private entities or fading base organizations. I'm just about done here with this presentation. As far as some of the other laws that are out there, age discrimination, the American Disability Act is pretty well known. But what we utilize in section 504, which is the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. And basically they're pretty much the same as well as what is going to be required. Civil Rights Act of 1968. These titles that are here. Auto relocation assistance. Miwa is here. The FEMA aspect of it is here. Some of these homes that were built in the seventies or even in the sixties or even in the eighties. If you would like to. Let me just go ahead and do this. Since it is lunchtime, can we say that we can come back at 10 after 10 after one? And then we can resume this session with the question and answer session. I don't the, we'll come back at 1:10 and we will do this portion of question and answer session. 1:10. Akosila, you guys have a lunch and if you brought your own lunch from home, enjoy your meal. We'll come back at one o'clock if you have.
Yati, naana, kodua alks ni se gua iya han ekilna cha nchatchetish ka, nchatchetish al ko de giba han ne, ndleni ge iya. De kui xinik ant e goldo, nikilna hasa do, nevi ka il ye do, i nka boha neetsa. Akohot, ahtol, ahtchatna, chatna hajjani sitha she iye ne.
During the presentation I did mention there are some other programs that are in operation under Navajo Housing Authority while we're waiting for other participants to come back on. I believe I can cover this within the next two minutes in regards to when we said we would get started again. Currently Navajo Housing Authority does have some other programs in regards to assisting Navajo families or individuals that may need assistance as a veteran or as an individual that's seeking housing utilizing some of the programs that we may have. The first one is the Navajo Emergency Rental Assistance, ERAP, Emergency Rental Assistance. The number for that is 871-2669. And that particular assistance is for those individual families that reside, Navajo families that are residing off Navajo who may have been impacted by the COVID pandemic and their income may have been impacted as well or in need of rental assistance. Documents that you will need is the eviction notice and then also the amount of rent that you are still owed. And then also some of those other forms as far as CIB is really needed. And then also a lease agreement with your name with the individual party who is requesting for assistance. That is rental assistance, the emergency rental program. And then the other aspect of that is the utility payments as well. If you have a utility payment in the name of the individual that is applying for the assistance that will be requested. And then also it does cover internet services as well. That would be out of pocket, you pay for the service and then you turn in the receipt and that could be reimbursable. Ako e dikitaya, we've assisted families from Washington DC down to Florida over to Hawaii, been back up into the northwest state of Washington, then all the way up into Alaska. Those individual non-Navajo families residing within the jurisdiction of Navajo may also qualify as long as they have a CIB as well, Certificate of Indian Blood. The other is the Section 8 program. And basically what that is, is for individual families who may be pursuing homes off Navajo near a border town. And basically it's a voucher system, let's say for instance the rental property is $800 and we go according to the income limits as well. And 20% of your income is covering for rental assistance. And if that rental is more than the 20%, let's say for instance the individual home that the family is interested in is $800. However, the 20% of the family's income is $200, the remaining 600 dollars will be covered by a voucher system. That is one program. You will call Kim Bahi, Ms. Kim Bahi's phone number, or you can contact the receptionist. Her number is 871-2600 and inquire about the Section 8 program. The last program that I would like to share with you is the Veterans Bash. That particular program is to assist veterans who would like to reunite with their families or those veterans that may be homeless and residing off Navajo in border towns or other municipalities. And if you would, if the veteran would like to learn more about that program, they can also call Kim Bahi. It is a voucher system as well. And the number that you can contact Kim Bahi for Section 8 and then also VASH For the Emergency Rental Assistance, you can dial 928-871-2669 to talk to a receptionist or you could go to Navajo Emergency Rental Assistance Program and you can Google that and then the application will be on electronic format and you can submit that. If you ask a question utilizing the general email system on the ERAP webpage, then you will have to put your own name and then also your address because it doesn't separate those email at or incoming email by individual addresses. So e dikihto, kadea naidi kichet or jish, tsa naidok kitato. This is an opportunity for you to ask questions in regards to the presentation on the basics of Nahazta. Klas naidok kitada. Gloria, I see your hand up. Ashifutab.
No, I believe that was from this morning when I accidentally hit that when I was adjusting my screen.
Okay. Your mic is on. Did you want to ask a question? Kree la naana do, llas naidok kit. Ms. Begay, Semesita Begay, your hand is up. Okay, I don't see any other hands up and so I will conclude. Okay, Roland So, please. Roland, I see your hand up and your mic should be open and all you would have to do is work it on your end. There you go.
Yati, sunan ta do, arei nchilnawlneki. Lhaoh, isisandeh, sunan nashtholona kiltsanje. Ko de kui xinshi ba nahaswale, lahliu go da dissa veterans da tenegi, nidisisande. Ko shu naghrexi ya dak hellende nasah, mini forms, de bebenan taansle. Adet local chapter bichindasnes iko. Iko do kwea e ya bahnadis kitado lill, adu kui go si, ado si, nihi, tshinadu damnachili wll. Iko. Di de naghre kayaagi dau kit, oh, inex e, arei kayaagi yo kit. Iko ahasinlta god, e pukaanashwo, naghre de naltsosatete jahagi kaya, da yotraangi cho e kohmetsa illanushtaho di kuegi e ya Navajo Housing Authority kaya yo kit. Hawan la na do neshaltsob, bha ganitad, tenhot awnda kree. Hawan kuea laan do neshindaba dixneho, arei de bebe naltsosatete jahagi ndashudni. Ad a etan kon hitraho nazneli, e hwanalba nazneligi, do ba da hayanda. Do bi gahaba oltah, benina arei bi gahaba oltah, hai benina kwood nihi ganda dey tsidou ya nakree. Lhaitsanalt ada yidjaho, do ya da haliyango, elki da ilksihu kwoodin sidabendiltsid. Ilzei da tenegi do a tenna hatlahta, laho ta behyo ta yigih, naghre itses kehota. Edota, naghre electronics da tenei cho edo, do trash picker, begi donda yillahtha. Eda tenegi do kwoodin hiyad yigih, ha ismini ya e kaya laan hitsa hunanushtlihto lill. Do dalanltseltsa dahosse, ndashudni. Kohra tene benilt ada huis ti, kueela chuit aw, eltsa bahzoba aliyago. Okho, lahat e kaya naltsosatete jahagi, hazoba bichindasne, neshosalaltso da, da tenei. Hazoba eltsa hoti, nillto, zo ke da hati do lillto. Huin sinde, arei ncha da hunson, nichitxisada, sonzekri so e hota, sonichitahte nad e ah. Adet benilt ahui te, iko zapesu da ne, dehdo besu dan dehende. Kwoodi kaya hini kit, ado, nedio, enigi yen hitath nahataho, adet benilt ahiliye. Iko hata ya ban tiski, shidi shilhasa agi hwan gi, hota, selaaltsob nlonla, bha ganitadno. Bara nin shlon, bha ganitadno, abitkaotcha dagahoh. Sodadu kui xinakue, inex e yin naltsosoh. Oh, oh, n application eni de, inna ntlehbitetno, do bitetno. Sodadu kui xinakho bitcho esdi, etanat, sili wunasi, naadu tlehchehta badi no, yitzen nlesili. Wunasi, kohot eda pikehastin. Oh, hotza, iko, do abit e, hot e, shudasunala, hot e go, e abit nahlilthlosa ochholzis. Wunasi, assisaga, guna egba akasya ochholzis. Iko bichindasne ni, bichindakedini tiho. Iko, hota, teko, pa dahatcho ba goonda kree. Iko, alit aw, ba hazo tolnil, naghre dak hellengi, de kui go si, inex e housing sinnel. Ate do, do hazo begi des ti, da do ba da hayanda. Oh, hayut ot, sinbadada desnelo, la, la, adanas oh, tsepinakuegi, et obitasam, sinbadat ninnelo. Oh, hota, tenei da altse da aliyago, selaaltsob, aliyago, hazo, ado, ned bichindaneso, siya te. Iko, naghre tunligi, hot aw bichindani, hasit esin, nzonagui lindalnesh, hasit esin epandan tla. Iko, aroinda domestic violence eni de setsan, tunligi do, illanjutne ninnelne. Iko, kui l, e, a esin altse ixnebi gahaba oltah, neniki. Di de domestic violence victims iki, chaad ne, ninnelne. Iko, hot e go, thiqil ihon sin, benaltsosi, chaad ahallkens. Nlati yahi nehoh, etli bichindane yahanayitlos. Aroinda eda a, hota, do neb nasi, hota, bana oltahle do tsu ilzis iko. Iko, yonan tla. A, a sit ahzoba begi des ti, do, do ne bichindaneso, oh, hot ago, e ya di de, eltsineyixinda ahiltiai do, hot aw ba oltah. Hagi hazo iliyago, sinahde, michitnailigo. Nzonagola, la, la, la bar kayaapana ni do, tal, zudenei kaanatza huin zindole. Kar e nan tla. Iko, a, a nehuan bar, aharo, hot enhalenle. Iko, e ya, e ya, kudo, bahnadish kido, lahat naadish kirigi. Aro, nedanat ani la, kudo, bes mahasa anisla, da istansh, da, da, osho kusilti, kuea do, naadish kid. Naana, kadi de ncha altse ne, nedigo, heskree. Ka, nchilna haso tloo, kwoodi nahokha, nadaw, nihil nadawtaani, kayahtanana shada nohtchada badi no. Do ba nahazta da. Iko, kuegi ayegobe, nahoti, bahwi dil ahliki itan. Iko, inex e kudo nahazda behazani hollon. Beso hasinelt, da na ilh eni bikhao, hwan ikena yillaha gi bikhao atjasel. Iko, single parentan lon, hunegi isitago. Abitzut nahalitlosa hazo bago, naghre kaan daalwode, da bekla da iyilto, olchchahto benanushaleho. Ason, zunoh bitzut nahalia do lillan, naghre home site listini ya, chaadachad do lillto, bha ganit do lillan. Obi kit da na do lkill, kadla bitzut nahaliasilin, rehdi bikiit da do lkill. I kahila, i da, yegu yekidoltsi la, laon, rehdi bikiit da na do lkit, zunenhalen. Api kidoltsi la go, hun, a huneg. Hun, Eh, Cha, Ch'Ah, Bitz, N'Nah, L'N, Bi, Ke, Re, Da, N'Dilkil, Oh, As, On, Anis, Ba, Na, Da, Ah, Ha, Oh, Bi, Ke, Da, Ilkil, De, Kueel, La, Anj, Na, Ah, L'Ye, L'Ku, Eh, Ni, Re, Da, Na, Do, L'Kil, Nahde, Eh, Home Site Lease, Da, Sa, Do, L'In, Si, Kehyah, Hun, De, Sh'Nel, Sunel, Ch'Oh, Ah, Z'Oh, Re, Da, Na, De, Sh'Ked, Oh, Ah, Z'Go, Sh'Pes, Oh, Na, De, Okho, Oh, Nigui, Ts'Oh, Slip, Bi, Ke, Eh, Da, Ay, Y'all, L'Crabs, Biti, Ni, L'Ch'Ad, E, L'Ch'Ah, Ha, Neho, Dahna, Dahit, Zins, Eh, Kui, Eh, N'Nah, L'N, Di, Di, Be, Ha'Zani, Ki, Ben, Ben, Eh, Oh, D'Ne, Dahna, Itzins, Oh, Ah, Hun, Eh, Ha, Ta, Ch'Ah, Wanas, Sid, Ah, Hun, Eh, Lha, Bi, Ke, Dahot, Ni, Ah, Do, Bi, Kehyah, Hun, Dahit, De, Snada, Di, Eh, Sh'Il, Ah, Ta, Oh, Sin, Antha, Ba, Ot, Da, Sun, Ch'Ah, K'os, N'son, Eh, Ed, Sh'Nes, Oh, Sh'Il, Ah, Le, Okho, Eh, Ch'He, Kuee, Sh'Ah, H'La, Ki?
Akola, Ch'He, Ne, Kon, Is, Nantha, Mr. So, Di, Di, Ki, Ko, Do, Inei, L'Ch'Ah, Ki, Eh, Ya, Eh, Naltsos, Ch'Be, Kado, Ch'Be, Kado, N'Da, Eh, G'Ch'Ah, Eh, Sanche, Eh, Do, N'Ch'Oh, Sh'Ah, Ado, Di, Sh'E, Ya, Eh, Ch'Yan, Da, Ch'Yan, Da, Is, Ah, Oh, Ch'Ah, Akho, Di, Di, Ki, Kon, N'Ch'Ch'Neng, Ch'Ah, Gi, Ya, Ko, Do, Ki, Ch'E, Ah, K'Ah, Ti, N'Ch'Oh, Ch'Ah, She, Ya, Un, Behos, Sin, We, Do, W'Ch'Ah, Di, Di, Ch'Ah, 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 H'Lo, Ah, Do, N'da, Ta, Hawa, Ba, Da, Ah, Ah, Do, Na, Nish, Bitzi, Li, Ki, Do, Ya, Eh, Ho, Ah, Bitch, N'I, Il, Ye, Ki, Ah, J'ko, Bitch, Hu'li, Ih, Ho, Ah, Do, N'da, Eh, Ya, Ti, Di, Benilt, Ah, K'Es, Dahaki, Ah, J'na, Hit, De, Zido, N'He, Ye, Ki, Te, Ot, Ih, Ha, No, Eh, Di, Ki, Eh, Ya, Eh, Akho, Eh, Go, Eh, Ah, Ni, Ot, Eh, Ah, Eh, Ya, Nak, Ch'Do, Ch'J'Ve, Do, N'Lo, Ki, Eh, Di, Ki, Eh, Ya, Eh, Bi, Ka'as, N'Ne, Do, Le, Akho, Eh, Di, Ki, Nak, Ch'Do, Ch'J'Sh'Nen, Ki, Ah, La, Peso, Yahay, Ch'Ah, Ch'Ah, Ki, Eh, Di, Ki, Eh, Do, Lha, Oh, Ne, Da, Ah, Kui, Ge, S'L'Kil, Ah, Do, N'da, N'Le, Lha, Oh, Eh, Ya, Eh, Eh, Benda, Ni, T'Neki, Eh, Ya, Ch'Oh, Kon, Ah, Yu, Adla, Ada, N'He, Le, N'Le, Ah, Hawa, Ni, Ki, Abi, Keni, Ih, Ye, Do, Le, Ki, Sh'Nash, Oh, H'Ne, Ts'Ah, Oh, H'Ne, Ts'Ah, Da, Kon, Ch'Ah, At, Eh, Ko, Ha, De, Le, Ha, Ni, Go, Do, Eh, Adol, Ch'Do, N'Le, Ah, Do, N'da, Eh, Ya, Eh, Ben, Nah, Ch'Go, Ki, Eh, Ya, Hawa, Ni, Ki, Eh, Slah, Ki, La, Ada, Ni, Ki, Le, Go, Eh, Ah, Ch'Ah, Go, Ah, Ch'Uy, Keni, Do, Le, L'To, Eh, Ah, J'ko, Ot, Eh, Ah, Do, N'da, N'Le, Ch'Alch'ne, L'To, Oh, Ah, De, N'Ch'An, N'Ch'An, Na, Idi, Do, Ta, Do, Kon, Eh, N'Ch'Na, Nish, Oh, Belhna, De, Nish, Do, Le, Ch'An, Neniki, L'To, Eh, La, Na, Na, Hu'in, Sun, Akho, Eh, Di, Ki, Ben, Nah, Ch'Go, Ki, Ch'Land, Ah, N'Le, Ni, Ki, Ko, Do, Ki, Eh, Ya, Eh, Ben, Ni, Eh, It, It, Ni, Eh, Ko, Halit, Ah, Al'Yago, Ch'Ah, La, Be, Behos, Ah, Ni, Ni, Hit, N'Ay, Keh'All, Eh, Do, Le, Ch'Oh, Ot, Eh, Go, Eh, Ya, Ah, Ban, Ch'Ah, K'Es, Di, Da, Ah, Ni, Le, Ch'An, Oh, Ch'Yu, Ya, N'Le, Lha, Te, Ch'Oh, Da, Be, Le, Ch'An, Da, Ni, Ilchih, N'Le, Da, K'Chah, Oh, Ah, De, Eh, De, Rad, Ah, Do, N'da, Ch'Niyah, Ch'Ah, La, Eh, La, Do, Bi, Ke, Nah, Ch'Ah, Do, Ah, Do, N'da, Na, Da, Ilch'Ah, Akho, Behos, Ah, Ni, Ah, Eh, Si, Ye, Go, Bitzi, Le, L'Ya, Do, Ch'Ah, La, Be, Behos, Ah, Ni, Keh'All, Eh, Do, Le, Oh, Kon, De, N'Ch'An, Na, N'Ch'Ah, Di, Ben, Li, Hu'Lo, Ni, Ki, L'To, Ben, Li, Ot, Eh, Go, Ah, Le, Ch'An, Da, Ba, Ya, T'K'Nak, Ch'Ah, Ah, Do, N'da, Eh, Ah, Le, Ch'An, Ki, Kon, Di, Ki, Da, Be, Da, Ah, T'K'De, Eh, Akho, Ah, Do, Ts'Ilze, Ha, Neniki, L'To, Eh, Di, Ki, L'To, N'Le, Lha, Oh, Eh, Ya, Ah, Ch'Ah, Ah, Le, Ts'Ilze, Ch'Ah, Dahaki, Eh, Ki, Eh, Ya, Hans, So, Ch'E, Ba'Ch'Ah, H'Sen, Akho, Eh, Da, De, Ch'Ah, Lo, Ts'Ilze, Ki, Ah, Ku, Ya, Na, Da, Yi, Ki, Eh, Do, Da, N'Le, Ch'Sh, Er, H'An, Ah, J'On, Ah, Ko, Di, Ch'Ah, Behos, Ah, Ni, De, Tr'Anas, N'Le, B'Rando, Ki, De, Qu'J'J'Ah, H'Zo, Ch'Ah, Ki, Open, Ch'Ah, Eh, Di, Ki, N'Nigo, Ki, Ch'Ah, Hawa, Non, N'Lo, Ah, De, NHA, Ki, Ch'Ah, Hawa, Non, N'Lo, B'Ch'Ah, Ah, Ki, Do, N'Ch'Ah, Ch'Ah, N'Ch'Ah, Ch'Ah, 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 Ah, Do, N'da, Se, Ch'Ah, 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 Ya, Di, Ki, Eh, Benina, Eh, Ya, Da, Di, Di, Ki, Be, Sh'Ko, Ki, Ah, Ki, Do, De, Ch'Oh, Da, N'Ne, Akho, N'Hit, N'Ne, Neniki, L'To, Hans, So, Da, Eh, Ya, Kon, Eh, Ot, Eh, Go, Lha, Oh, Eh, Ya, Nzunagui, Eh, Ya, Ya, Dahalya, Do, Ah, Do, N'da, Eh, Ya, Ts'Ilze, Eh, Ya, Do, Bel'Ch'Ah, Ah, Do, Do, Bel'Ch'Ah, Yos, Da, Do, Ah, Do, N'da, B'mis, Do, Bel'Le, Ch'An, Da, Nzunow, Ya, Dahalya, Kon, De, Lha, Oh, Eh, Ya, Do, Ah, Ts'Hone, Akho, Eh, Di, Ki, N'Le, Ch'Ah, Oh, Behos, Ah, Ni, Da, At, Eh, Ch'Ah, Na, Sn'le, Ch'Oh, Hey, Kueegi, Ki, Behos, Ah, Ni, El'Yago, Ah, Te, De, Bi, Kest, Ch'Oh, Ch'Ah, 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 Ah, Do, Da, Eh, Ben, Nah, Ch'Go, Ki, Eh, Ya, Ko, Do, D'Ne, Da, Ta, Do, Na, Te, S'So, Be, Bel, Dahuit, Ni, Ni, Eh, Ya, Ts'Ilze, N'Le, Oh, Oh, K'J'Ki, Hawa, Nah, De, Zid, Oh, Bi, Ke, Es, Dahaki, Ho, Ke, Es, Tapadi, Neniki, Public Rental, Eh, Di, Ki, Eh, Ya, Ts'Ilze, N'Le, Ni, Ki, Eh, Ya, Eh, Kueegi, Ch'Ud'Ts'Oh, Bit'Chah, N'da, Lo, Ah, Do, N'da, Ts'Ilze, Ki, Ch'Ah, N'da, Yi, Ah, Akho, Hawa, Oh, Ke, Es, Ra, Do, Yolp'ih, Ki, Eh, Ya, Eh, Ah, Ne, Eh, Ah, J'ba, Ha, Di, Ni, L'Tabadi, No, Eh, Ya, Ah, Ot, Eh, Akho, Eh, Di, Ki, Oh, 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 Ch'An, Be, Ak'Ch'Ah, Oh, Kui, Ki, Eh, Ya, N'Ch'Ud'Sh, Ah, Ah, Do, N'da,[954.82]
Be evicted. And um. Do ya ashkona ahut in goko? And then when there's abuse again, they don't want to report it. Because they they fear that they're going to be evicted. And um. Akor. This silence is the crime of domestic violence and abusers are able to continue harming their families without accountability. But our judicial system, um, it's like. The batterers, they're slapped on the wrist and they're told now you be you. Be a good little boy and run along, don't do it again. Tabit ninnahaln. Akor ebe bishpeta hazin. And affordable housing is hard to come by on the Navajo Nation. Because of this, the loss of a family's NHA unit often means the loss of the Navajo Nation for that family. Akor with no other housing options, women and children are forced to relocate to non-Navajo cities. And consequently away from their social support network, their language and their culture, especially the little children. Thus, family violence continues to degrade traditional culture. Children are abused and evicted for being abused, then displaced from the Navajo Nation altogether. Akor, you know, as not on his NHA has the responsibility to create housing policies that allow victims to find safety. And healing in their homes rather than policies which allow their eviction during their biggest time of need. Akor, NHA needs to step up as a leader in prioritizing family safety to serve as a model, not only for the Navajo Nation. But also for other tribal housing authorities and government. Jashay what ab on siskas just because I've seen many, many victims from NHA housing. Although we we had two burnouts since since January. Akor the emergency housings but then. But as I drive around, I I I've driven to the housing here just to see. There's probably up to nine um units that are just um. They are. Obi obi oh obi dada esje. You know, they there's empty complexes at these housing and some of them de rolin and the neat oh. Um kushin dahi ati ah what eh oh they're boarded up. I thought that, you know, under the housing regulation or HUD regulation. NHA is supposed to monitor and be reporting back. And my question and my concern is once a family vacates a house. How long does it take for NHA to rent re-renovate it? Um fix it for another family. But oh what oh that's where these criminal activities continue to 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 happen. Oh, ne ne da ya da neho, some of them, they're homeless desk. As good. Hashin zago oh what ah oh one opi ta taljin do edo da opi um. Um, but that that there's odd or less and it it's just a sore sight to see. Um, when you drive around and all what on the haz. Ah, hashin zago oh what edo, I think that that needs to be a priority. Families are looking for housing go. Oh, when that the ne da bo landoy yet oh what ah on the haz. So that's just what I wanted to bring up and thank you so much for this public hearing and thank you for listening to me.
Hakushila ya kudo ah isiko eyabat johadesh ah. Ah, kudon ye nan ta rolin so and then yourself did mention the boarded up units, yeah. Um Ernest Franklin and also the Wayne Wessera will be covering that as far as uh construction and development is concerned. Uh, they they are the the department that takes care of renovating and rehabilitating those homes. Uh, and make it available for the next the next family. In regards to the eviction process, then a key. Um, that would be, uh, you know, I would ask for, um, you know, a recommendation perhaps from you. Uh, there are two shelter homes that have been built. Um, as mentioned, uh, the 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 structure is put in place. And then the funding for um personnel, uh, maintenance and operation and insurance. As I had presented, uh, that is where some individual parties have a difficult time with. And this particular uh Indian housing plan or this discussion here is is that what are some of the recommendations? Uh, in regards to uh what you had mentioned. Uh, burnout units, how do you assist some of those families? How many homes should be set aside for those developments? And then also uh the eviction process, uh, because it's it's uh on the flip side of that, yes, Mr. So did mention. That uh the person has domestic violence and then the individual moves out and the perpetrator comes back and. Uh, reunites with the uh the other party as well, so. That's kind of complicated, but you're the expert in the domestic violence uh. Uh, in that particular cycle that happens with our families. And it could happen for a number of reasons, but I would ask you uh to continue to listen out, uh, Mr. Franklin and then also. Uh, Mr. Wesseta will be presenting on the uh plan that they. Uh, that is there in regards to how they're working out on some of those burnouts and uh those boarded up homes, so. Eighty day ah what edo this. Oh, kui gitayya se ona la di ayajiko again. Uh Gloria, I see your hand up.
No, not on my end. Uh, I don't know. I guess I'm having a computer issue on this it. Um, but it's not, it's. I have it as a red. I apologize if my hand keeps coming up.
Okay. Ah, don't the tashash naidoski. If if not, then we can go to uh Ms. Nellie Gilmore. She will be presenting on the Indian Housing Block Grant. Nellie's going to be presenting uh on this particular uh presentation. Her presentation is also on the um on the website as far as the presentation is concerned, so if you'd like to um. I download that, that'd be ideal. So uh Ms. Gilmore, um, she is on there and then she will uh be able to uh share information in regards to. Uh, the Indian Block Grant and then also its policies and procedures. Ms. Gilmore.
Oh, hold on just a second, um. Trying to get in my saddle here.
Earl, can you see the slide? Earl, can you see the slide?
Yes, I can see the slide.
Okay. All right, good to go. Good afternoon, everyone. Yat eh shen auto be kijia. Um, thank you for all the listeners that are attending. There's, I see twenty-one of you. Out there listening this afternoon or all day. Ah, don't yehat non kishne shito um. Che ayah, just do my introduction here. Uh, uh, Nellie Gilmore, ayah, yin shia. Kapa hem shon tvo de chidi ma shischin. Onea la hinga shi chedot. Uh, kachidne ayah da shanmala. Ah, don't lay um, you see, I the hadi, na pine springs, ah, the eh, you see, na shadow. Um, Navajo Housing Authority, eh, yashan onish um as a grants manager. Ah, don't in Grants Management Department in uh of NHA were located at uh Wind Rock at the central office. And I have two staff or actually three, two grants analysts, um, Leah Ray Francisco and then Cheryl James. Eh, the staff at SO. I'm gonna present to you the uh Indian Housing Nahaza Act of nineteen ninety-six. The Indian Housing Block Grant Management Systems Policies and Procedures. Abenda, uh Earl presented to us the uh Nahaza Updates and where we are with Nahaza. Ah, don't he talked about how funds are allocated. So this policy that I'm gonna present to you, eh, ayah. Um, eh, be kah, um, that's our guiding uh policy that we use to develop our Indian Housing Plan. Uh, you'll find out what uh Indian Housing Plan consists of, so. So, starting with the policy, um, it Navajo Housing Authority uh has an oversight, um. Uh, earlier it was mentioned that we have a Board of Commissioners, so. Um, they approve policies, various policies that we have. So this Indian Housing Manu- uh Block Grant Management Systems Policy, ki ayah. It was first developed back in two thousand eight. Ah, don't shteh horjish, so there was some uh amendments done, so the latest policy that we have is um. September third, twenty fifteen. So, eh, she bein he kashnet don leh. So the question is, um, I should, oh, ayah, Indian Housing, how do we um fund some of these projects? Eh, shein that's that's gonna be the the the, this is the purpose the policy is developed. So purpose of the policy is that it guides uh NHA in the development of the Indian Housing Plan. And then the governance of the Nahaza in IHBG allocation. I'm gonna use some acronyms, but um the last page on your slide, I hope all of you have a copy of this. Eh, it it talks about what all the acronyms are stand for, so. Um, so bear with me when I start saying acronyms. B, ayah, it outlines procedures and application of our IHBG funding. To achieve maximum returns to Navajo Nation. And building essential safe sanitary and affordable homes within the budget limitations. And then in the policy statement, it we do, uh, we have to have an efficient and effective management system. In the application of the IHBG funds. So we know that all federal funds, federal funds are very strict. Uh, so the la la enko policies, do requirements and um. A lot of policy have, I mean, uh, regulations are tied to these federal funds. Binin nago, ah, hanago ayayi, because this, you know, of ayah la. So B, kun da eh, eh, it says we have to have a five-year project plan. And uh we do have a five-year project plan eh eh like. Mr. Wesseta had mentioned earlier that um Mr. Wesseta from communi- uh commi- uh Construction Services Division will be presenting. And so that's one uh policy statement. C, kun da ayah, uh, we have to assess the annual performance of each grant recipient relating to. Their performance and compliance. D, that every year, um, all grantees, including Navajo Housing Authority. We have to report to HUD, we have to report to Congress. Of our annual performance as to how these funds were utilized. Um, eh, the next bullet, ka. Um, under E is the, the report is due at HUD on or before December twenty-eighth. Uh, and it and it's required on an annual basis. La ka indicated, the purpose is to let Congress know the number of homes and housing. That were built and number of families that were served. Going on, policy statement E, there's a prohibition on um the use of these. The use there is required on any lien, encumbrance, mortgage or pledge of Nahaza funds or. Funds or property purchases purchased with Nahaza funds, including housing units. Without NHA consent or approval. So what it means is that um. Anyone that is funded with these uh Nahaza funds. To build homes or to do a a certain eligible activity. You cannot um give away your housing unit or your facility or. Sell or pledge to somebody else without NHA's consent or approval. Eh, so that's recall, that's a prohibition there. And then all our subrecipients are required to report and submit their program income to NHA for reallocation of funds to new. Housing development. So progr- program income refers to any subrecipient that have. Currently, um, we do have like eighteen active subrecipient that we still oversee. So say we have a teacher housing where they um have tenants that. Rent their teacher housing, so whatever income they derive derive from those um rentals. They collect those and if they have a um, a um. How would you say, if they have a profit. So they have extra money that they made. Those funds are to be returned to Navajo Housing Authority. So that new housing can, those funds can be used for new housing development. Eh, I snip program income um from Nahaza Assistant um Rental or um Facility. G, NHA is to adopt general procedures that forth in this policy, so. Going on to responsibilities under three, um, Grants Management complies with the NHA Compliance and Self-Monitoring. And IHBG Management Systems Policies and Procedures. We do have an internal compliance department um and within our organization, so. Uh, we utilize them a lot, and they they annually, they do. Monitoring reviews with all our programs and our subrecipients, so. Uh, as I indicated earlier, there's eighteen active subrecipient out there. So annually, they they have to select which um recipient to do and then they do their reviews with them. B, NHA Board of Commissioners, um, they approve our Indian Housing Plan, both for a formal and informal amendment. Formal amendment is when they, FY twenty twenty-two. Uh, Indian Housing Plan is already approved, however, it was decided to add new activities or new projects. So that requires a full formal amendment, all the way from the board to the Navajo Nation President. And then informal are those uh minor um uh funds that need to be reallocated or just um. Uh, minor changes to the uh Indian Housing Plan. Number two, they review the annual performance report and re- and approve the self-monitoring. So that's the board's responsibility under. Ah, don't see kun da ayah, NHA Executive Management. Uh, like our CEOs, our Deputy CEO or any um French uh chiefs, we call them. There to ensure that the staff adhere to all the statutes, the regulation, policies and procedures. And then um they to they are to make sure that um all um resources are available, like labor, our equipment supplies and materials. To operate the Navajo Housing Authority. Three, um, they are to support any corrective actions that are recommended by Compliance Department. Um, this is really important because we make sure that uh all programs are following their um. Nahaza regs, regulations, so that um when HUD annually comes on site, um. They're they're, when they review our program, um, they hopefully limit. Some of the reviews and findings that um that were caught, you know, that were captured by the Compliance Department. D, kun da eh, our grants are subrecipient again, um, they are to comply with applicable statutes, regulation, policies and procedures. As well. So anytime we have to terminate a subrecipient or uh if they completed their project. Uh, they are to um, all the um equipments that they use or purchase. Can be returned to NHA, but um if they continue to operate, then you know that that they're allowed to keep as well. Under the general procedures, um, in A, development of the Indian Housing Plan. So this is the part that um uh guides us how we do our annual. Uh, annual Indian Housing Plan. The Grants Management develops the Indian Housing Plan consistent with the five-year plan that I mentioned earlier. We are to provide the number of families to be served. Uh, funds are to be allocated uniformly throughout the Navajo Nation. Priority for funding for families shall be applied as follows. Um, low-income families under A homelessness, overcrowded and substandard. B, kun da eh, low-income elderly, disabled persons, veterans. C, college housing. D, housing for essential personnel, um, like for public safety, medical, judicial, judicial or educational. E, kun da eh, daycare centers, uh elderly group homes and shelters. And then F, eh, other model activities serving low-income residents. So what oh, it's case and then ah, don't four, kun da ayah. We do, it, we're required to conduct and public hearings on an annual basis. So going back to um the history of Navajo Housing Authority. Back in um when Nahaza first became um law. Um, there used to be public hearings conducted almost every year. So as far as I remember that, I think the last time we had a actual public hearing was in twenty two thousand eight, somewhere around there. And so again, this is the first year again that we we're gonna be offering this, so going forward, um. We will start having these annual um public hearings. Five, uh, where the five-year plan shall consist of the number of families to be served. And then this uh plan is to be presented to the board, our NHA board, no later than February, February first of each year. So going on. So B, determination of funding appropriation and budget limitation. Um, Grants Management um is responsible to provide an estimated annual Indian Housing Block Grant. We do this normally based on prior year allocation, so our FY twenty twenty-two allocation was like eighty-two million, so. Going into two thousand twenty-three, we're gonna use that allocation amount. Um. To to start with, however, uh HUD makes the final allocation, um. Say we in, we do the Indian Housing Plan and we submit it this year in July, by July eighteenth. So these funds will not become available until next year by May or June, so. Our proposal, our grant app application through Indian Housing Plan is submitted one year ahead of time. So eh, eh, what eh, um, the estimate and set aside. Uh, we estimate and then we set aside the F CAS. I think Earl talked about this earlier in his presentation, is the formal return assistant operating subsidy and then modernization allocation per HUD notice. In prior um meetings with other organizations and through some of the leadership that we met with, um. Uh, we present this to them over and over that um. We set aside like thirty million right off the top because. Per HUD notice, this is a required and by law, we have to set aside this allocation to. To meh, to operate and maintain our public rentals and our um nichong help that are out there. So I know there's like close to eight thousand units out there. So eh, di, ayah, eh, it really um decreases our needs portion, but um. We manage to operate with um the funds that we get and these are set aside already right off the top. So we also, as a Grants Managed Department, uh, our Chief Financial Officer is also involved. She helps us and we we have to coordinate with her as to how we're gonna allocate some of our operating costs. Right now, um, the the grant allows up to twenty percent of the annual grant for operating costs. This is our support staff within NHA. Um, and then the allocation is then reviewed by the board for approval. And then going on to C, under general procedures, priorities and allocation of IHBG funding. Number one is um. New construction of uh homeownership. Two is new construction of public rental. Three is new residential housing. These are all planning. Planning and engineering is three and four. Five, kun da ayah, existing residential housing renovation, self-help repair. Um, and then planning and engineering as well. Six is our resident self-sufficiency opportunity and these are housing services activities for housing counseling and um. Um, providing education to our current tenants, how to be self-sufficient. Um, and then seven is regional model activities, construction-ready projects. This could be uh daycare centers, this could be um uh college housing, student housing. And then also planning and engineering uh uh funding as well. Nine is non-regional model activities, construction-ready projects. Non-regional model activities, planning and engineering. So it all depends on the need um as to what type of model activities are like. Daycare centers, there are like elderly group homes, there are like women's shelter, student housing. And then our own Navajo Housing Authority building new office buildings. Um, and then also renovation of our office buildings, eh, oh, yeah, model activity. Uh, model activity is required to be reviewed by HUD. They're they're the approving agency to to fund these activities, eh, eh, what that's all. And then um, so our procedures to um fund, how we issue funding to. If we decide to do, um, put out maybe fifteen million dollars out to the public. And request for uh proposal. So E is is um RFP. So our office, we publish the RFP um in January of each year. We normally put it in the local newspaper, we announce a grant funding opportunity for housing projects. And then our proposals are usually due at our office no later than February twenty-eighth. And then these proposals are then reviewed by an evaluation team. And all the uh criterion are um, there's six of them, there's administrative. You have to have an administrative capacity, they look at the proposal content. As to how um, how you're gonna justify these funding and what type of development you're gonna do and then um. You talk about all the goals and objectives under this category. And then three is we also look at funds that are, you're gonna leverage from other sources. Uh, we look at that too, a requirement. Four, ayah, talks about your compliance and monitoring, how well you um. If you have any audits or audit findings, those are some, if you have good, good and no audit findings, that's what we look at as well. Five, vki eh, performance, your past history and your, how well you did your projects. And whether you completed on time. Number six, ayah, capacity, have the capacity to operate and maintain units or facility. So the only um funds or activity we don't fund is. Operation and maintenance funding. Eh, ayah, um, Nahaza is not funding those, um. So you have to have your operating and maintenance um funding on 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 from from your side, from the side. As a sort of like a cost sharing. Ah, don't the RFP, like I said, there's an evaluation team, um, they're listed there. Uh, myself or whoever is gonna be in this. Myself, or whoever's going to be in this, Grants Manager, our Grants Accounting Staff, our Executive Office from Navajo Nation, Legislative Branch, someone from there, our own internal management staff, our legal staff, and one Board Member. A: Proposal review. They do an evaluation, that's the process that we go by. And then at, in, under G, the selection process. A: Any proposal that scored, that has score of 75% or over is then prioritized for funding. So the cutoff points are when funding categories are depleted. A: Projects that did not get funded will be reconsidered in the subsequent plan year. A: If there's a proposal that had a good score and then finally we ran out of funds, so they're just going to have to move to the next year. And they'll be reconsidered. The selection process, while required, our Board of Commissioners review and approve of by April 30th. We do have an appeal process as well, under H. Any applicant that, any applicant can apply, appeal within 30 days if at least they scored 65 points. Their appeal must have good reason. The Evaluation Committee will have 30 days to make a decision on this appeal. So following all this process, it takes from January all the way to May or June. We finally submit all these documents or the Indian Housing Plan to the HUD Office in Albuquerque. So under J is, like I said, Navajo Nation approval. The Board approves the Indian Housing Plan sometimes in May. And then RDC approves IHP in May or June. The President, the Navajo Nation certifies the Indian Housing Plan June or end of July. And then the IHP is then submitted by, at least by July 15th, it's actually due on July 18th. A: That's how our process is. And then under K is we do have a land use restriction agreement. D: It's part of the requirement. So one is this land use restriction agreement is a useful life requirement from six months to 20 years. And then two is it's required for trust land, allotted land, and fee land. Three, it's required for all Indian Housing Block Grant Assistant Units or Facility. It serves as a collateral assignment for subrecipient projects. Five, timing for Alura execution is that these agreements will have to be signed within six weeks of funding. The number six, though, the use restriction is required for recipient who, who conveys or deeds to another homeowner or another organization within the affordable period. So let me, I'll explain this later. The breach of Aluras will result in repayment of funds to NHA or NHA will then retake control of the facility. So the land use restriction agreement, we, like I said, we do have 18 active subrecipient now. They all have this agreement in place. So all it says, and this requirement is that during their useful life between six months to 20 years, that they are not to sell, or they are not to give away their buildings, or they're not to convey to somebody else. A: There's a restriction, so that's one, another requirement. So once we, if a subrecipient is funded, then we have a subrecipient agreement that we have to put in place. So when awards are given, we'll issue a formal written letter to our grantees to execute their subrecipient agreement within six weeks. And then failure to file within a certain time, required time, funds will be recaptured and awarded to the next qualified applicant. And then our, the agreement is executed by the subrecipient themselves and then our NHA Chief Executive Officer. So agreements are put in place. Under M is our project management process. We do have an internal staff, project development coordinators that assist. They provide technical assistance to subrecipients. They help with the pre-application process, pre-planning, legal survey, environmental. So when a subrecipient, though, submit their grant application and they say they're qualified to implement their own project, this is what we look for as well. They have to have this capability. Pre-planning, legal survey, environmental, archaeology, right-of-way, NEPA, they have to follow the NEPA requirement. A: Engineering services. And then they have to have the ability to solicit for their construction contractor, including all the subs and, you know, supplies. Hado, five: A: They're able to complete their project and close out their project. So prior years, I think two years ago, we did have quality inspection program. We have development coordinators under Grants Management. They're now located at Fort Defiance under Development and Construction Division. So currently, we do have active subrecipients. Like right now, Crown Point is putting up their youth complex. And then there's other projects under Western Agency, two of them. So they're there to assist as well. And then six, under six, these funds are to be expended within two years. And we cannot exceed more than one year of extension. So we try to enforce that these projects need to be implemented on time. So if you're, if subrecipients are not expending their funds and we look at that as well. And then under P, we do the assessment and maintenance of a five-year plan. Did I skip a slide? I did. Okay, so. Under General Procedures, N, our monitoring and review of subrecipients. All subrecipients are monitored and reviewed and reviewed by our NHA Compliance Department. All grantees must comply with their agreement at all times, meaning that they are required to submit their monthly report. Construction pay applications have to be submitted on a monthly basis, as well as their requisition, their annual performance report. And then they are to ensure timely expenditure of funds and do their closeout. So Hado, they will, again, like I said, comply with onsite monitoring reviews. So our internal Compliance Department will visit our subrecipient out there in the field and conduct their compliance review, just like any auditors would do. So again, like I said, during the useful life, up to 20 years, we have to monitor our subrecipient through the duration of their useful life period. A: It's a lot of work, but we're doing it. And then under O, our five-year plan. NHA shall prepare a five-year plan consistent with our housing priorities of the Navajo Nation and in concert with the Navajo Nation chapters and communities. So this is the reason why we're having our public hearings. We want to know what you have out in your communities, what are your plans, what do you have going up, or what are you planning for the future of your chapter communities as far as housing? I, myself, am a chapter vice president from White Runes. So we are beginning to plan on some new housing development out there. So A: We like to hear those, some good stories. And Hado, going on, public hearing. We are to have a public hearing every five years at various locations throughout Navajo Nation. So maybe next year, we can pick, you know, some chapters out there within each agency. And hopefully by that time, we are able to travel and that this virus goes away. Otherwise, we'll be sitting here doing our virtual presentation again. So the five-year plan also requires a one-year plan. This is required as HUD also looks at this as a monitoring tool. So A: Indian Housing Plan. And then under Assessment and Maintenance of the Five-Year Plan, this just talks about in, on an annual basis, we manage and we move up the five-year plan one more year. That's all it talks about here in this section. And then Q, Navajo Nation, as a grant beneficiary, has a monitoring responsibility. All NHA programs, departments, subrecipients are responsible for monitoring their grant activities, including their compliance requirements. A: The last one, recapture and reallocation of Nahaza funds. All new projects or new requests for projects shall not be considered for funding. Funding from any recaptured funds. So A: And then any recaptured funds shall only be considered for current ongoing or shortfall projects through the approval of the Board of Commissioners. So when our recipients complete their projects, a lot of times, they have leftover funds. A: Any funds that are recaptured, we reallocate them, you know, to other projects that have shortfall. So this is the process for our Indian Housing Plan. And the last slide I have is just all the acronyms that are in the presentation. So with that, Earl, I'm going to send it back to you for any questions.
Mr. Franklin, are you on the line?
I'm Earl.
Okay, Mr. Franklin, you may proceed.
Can you see my presentation?
Yeah, we can see it.
Yeah, I don't know. You got a lot of Earl, huh? So, you, 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 uh, Indian Housing, Indian Housing Plan, New Development, Hado, Admissions, and Occupations. Uh, actually, uh, Baudet, Baudet. Um, uh, such a Tardis, Tardis. Jay, Ernest Franklin. Jaya Ernest Franklin. They bounce, they from Mexico, I had actually on three. Oko, kiya ani eh, nshidoo, na kha'neba sheschi. Kogee eh, dasan nala do, bulachini, eh dasitchei. Ado NHA. Kida Aya, Baudesneshli. Um, we thought eh, Senior Development Coordinator, should know, I thought eh, NHA Banashneshne, Kreyah, Division Director. Um, nshidood. Well, I'll see. I thought they think. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ernest Franklin. And I am the Division Director for Development and Construction Services Division. And my presentation is gonna cover an overview of the Indian Housing Plan eligible funding activities. And also the new development and then our modernization. And also our admissions and occupation activities. So an overview here. Anything was created in May of nineteen sixty-three. And we were funded through the nineteen thirty-seven Housing Act. Under, under HUD. And under that act, we were in charge of developing public rentals and also mutual help housing. And then in nineteen ninety-six, yeah, da, they, we moved from the nineteen thirty-seven Housing Act to Nahaza, which is a Native American Housing Assistance and Self-Determination. You would, no, this is your new funding source. And this is how you will, I'll explain how we are in charge of certain activities. I think Ms. Gilmore, I thought you're joking, as far as what we do and how we do it. I'll be giving a little bit more detail on what is, what is happening. So we have in our housing stock, three thousand eight hundred eighty-two public rental units. Some are Nahaza, some are nineteen thirty-seven. There are two different funding sources. Like I said, it went from nineteen thirty-seven Housing Act to Nahaza in nineteen ninety-six and was implemented in nineteen ninety-eight. So any houses that were built from nineteen ninety-eight going forward is all under Nahaza. Anything before that is under the nineteen thirty-seven Housing Act. With Aya, that's how these units were developed. It was four, four thousand one hundred and forty-four homeowner units for a total of over eight thousand units. We also have twenty-nine administrative facilities throughout the Navajo Nation. That include fifteen field offices in different, in regional locations. Without, that's how we operate. So funding, eligible funding activities. Indian Housing Assistance, there are subsidies. The rent, the stuff that we do for our rental units and also for home ownership down payment and federal subsidies and deductions. And we'll go over some of that later on in the, in the presentation. Our new development. They, I mean, who wanted about, that's what we, that's one of our activities. One of us is, and to get, put the houses down, we have to get land acquisition. And it's Aya, Kya, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm can't tell, but the car, no, no. So we have to use that and then also we have to use, we also have to get land for for waterline and power line. And then also they, um, point twenty, I think, so sewer lines, I think, many they, we also get land for sewer lagoon. But if there's no sewer lagoon, then we put in sub tanks. Although a leach field, which often the, it's Aya. We handle the, the wastewater. And then we, how we provide design and construction services.
Their uh their activities that they do out of streetlights. They tell that the. Uh that's what no, that's what we've been doing lately. We've been doing uh solar streetlights and that's. We're going through and we we put over seven hundred streetlights out there. So solar streetlights. And we're still, we still have a five year plan on that and we're still moving on on things like that. So um. But oh, we that's why we do those activities. Auto, the last one on this slide here is model activity. These are uh um housing related public facilities. Like uh group homes about Aegyo treatment. Uh it can be treatment centers. It can be other types of of uh uh housing related uh uh facilities out there. The the thing with that is that um we cannot provide like police stations, clinics. Other things like government administrative facilities, they don't done get done get there. There's other funding sources for that. Federal funding sources like I H S and U S D A and. Um other 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 funding sources that's supposed to be taking care of that type of activity. You guys just concentrate on housing related activities. So that's kind of how it without a but that that's on a. Um. From from the federal government. So that's kind of where we where we where we do the model activities auto. When we do a model activity, we just do the facilities and we hand it over and then that that that's what. Miss Gilmore says that you have to show operation and maintenance. Where is when we, where are you gonna get your money? To operate this facility. So tha- that's one of the things that we have to really ask for. Uh our C E O, our new C E O has been uh meeting with the Budget and Finance Committee and. She's telling him that if we build these facilities, you're as a budget, as a nomination budget and finance committee. You need to address the the everyday uh costs of these uh facilities that are that are being put up there. Yeah, that's how we're working in partnership with the Navajo Nation. Okay, our home uh home uh program, our homeownership program. For N H A, we have the mutual help housing program. And then we also a under a scattered sites. Um way up where they are, where they where they for where the people. They want their houses to be out there and lay the bed. And that's what we, that's what we do the 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 mutual help housing. In some cases, we do put them in subdivisions, but a lot of times they want it to be out in the. Out in the rural area. So um and that's a scattered site program. Auto in-house N H A financing for home ownership. There's all kinds of uh. Voucher programs that that we we that the N H A does and works in uh in conjunction with other partnerships out there. And then we have public rental program. That's the one where we have low income, low income rental program. It's subdivision. Uh rental, public rental program. And then, like I said, we have a section eight voucher program. If you can't meet your 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 rental obligations without A I, we we will also help with. With this and this is mainly for units outside of the Navajo Nation that are living in the border towns and other places like that. Without A I D voucher program. Okay, N H A, the hasda is all about is all from uh low in low income. For people that are trying to achieve that any game that that's the one that these, that's what this is for. This, this is what the whole purpose of what N H A does at this point in time, that's what the purpose of N H A is, but. We're gonna expand our 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 um our funding to see if we can do medium to high income. We're gonna try to launch some programs like this. Our new C E O. She's working with our board, see if we can get programs to address medium uh medium to high income. But A I, it's just low income base. But uh A I, this is from eighty percent from the. This is from the U S total medium income um from from the whole year. And then with the base is seventy nine thousand nine hundred dollars and eighty percent of that. Uh of that medium income base is sixty three thousand um nine hundred and twenty dollars. But uh yeah, that's how and it all, it's all part of a chart. So uh next one is gonna be a a slide of the the uh an example of how rent is is uh. So once you get into a unit, how we determine your your um. Now the CD begins to lagging um the the payments. But uh yeah, and so if you have a gross income of twenty five thousand dollars. And then you have deductions from from the child, you know, uh. Uh work, travel, all utility allowance. Uh based on that deduction, we will, we will, right there, it says two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. So you have an adjusted annual income of two twenty two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Auto, we have a twenty percent of adjusted income and that goes down to um. Uh four thousand four hundred and fifty two dollars. Divide that by twelve months. And your 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 monthly rent book comes down to three hundred and seventy one dollars. If you just, if we just use your twenty five thousand dollars general income and divide that by twelve, it's gonna be a lot more than three hundred and seventy one dollars. Auto, um they homeowners, it's all their their monthly payments on the homeowners. If you have the same amount of twenty five thousand, you get the you get the deductions of twenty seven hundred and forty dollars. And then you have fifteen percent adjusted income. And then and then you have your your computer rent income or your computer monthly payment for homeowner is three thousand three hundred and thirty nine dollars. You divide that by twelve and your monthly, your your payment is two hundred and seventy eight dollars. But uh yeah, that's how these things are are calculated uh based on federal requirements and federal uh policy. It was uh yeah, that's how that's that's how that is determined. Okay, so today uh we're gonna talk about, we're gonna talk about new development of housing development. So you have a timeline down there, land feasibility review, two to eight, eight months, land withdrawal process, six. Six months to one year and then you'll have your HUD funding uh for one year and then you'll have your your uh. Your design and construction services process, one to three years. It without A I, that's how that whole thing goes. So it starts out with feasibility land study. Um that's one thing that we have to, I'll talk about this more, but we talk about utility commitment, grazing. Meeting with the grazing people, roadways, I think it's the uh. Mister Soul brought up the grazing committee. When you don't take care of what's out there right now, we'll talk about that later on. But out of which in the ask, we need how we're gonna get to that survey, uh how we're gonna get to that house. I had a survey that any though um environmental clearance, yeah, and that. We do all that for for to do the land development. Auto. Then we we request for funding. We put it in the Indian housing. Where we're going through that process right now to request for funding for design and or construction of of housing units. Once we get the money, we start the design, we get all the utility approvals right away. I don't know, we go into construction design and then we get um environmental release of funds. When there's two environmental, you see down there. All the words says uh environmental approval uh under the design. Hey, that's to get approval to use federal monies to do this work. Gotta make sure that they Washington, they they make sure you you're sticking to environmental laws that are in place. And uh um Miss Nella Gilmore went over some of that uh uh on some of that requirements. All this uh right away. Then we move into construction. So how to get started? This is where we get to to uh how we, how is funds allocated to chapters and community housing for development projects? First thing is the chapter submits a resolution to Navajo Housing Authority requesting for technical assistance. To identify feasible sites for housing development. So this, this, this is the, this, this document here, this resolution is what is what we call um demonstration of need to to HUD. When we get audit it, they're gonna say, why did you use um a HUD resources over here? Then give it no. Then we take out that resolution, we give it because we've got this community asked for it. We started to, we started to do our services in that area. So that chapter resolution is very important. Auto, my my division, B C S D, we start to compile the feasibility studies and report to the chapter on the pre-selected land. And true recommendations to proceed with housing projects. We do this by working with the uh club committees. With A I, we and and also the grazing committee and and the farm board, whoever's gonna be involved in this project. Oh, we we meet with them and we 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 put together maps and we put together recommendations and reports. Back to back to uh back to the community so we can make a decision on how we're going to go with this with this project. Once we, once we determine that, then the chapter passes resolution and tells N H A to proceed with the land withdrawal. So um according to the to the uh general land, development department and their uh land designation. We just designate those those three, we usually ask for three areas. That's what you, that's what we do, the land designation. Auto, if we if we've determined that 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 site is good, is good enough for withdrawal. And then you give us another resolution saying, today, you guys start working and start all your. Your 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 survey and all the uh all the documentation to finish the land withdrawal. That's number three. And then uh the chapter's responsibilities in this process is is like I said before, is to submit the resolution. Requesting for technical assistance for feasible land, identify, we ask for three, at least three potential areas. And then the chapters will prioritize the the proposed areas if more than one site is feasible. They're all three sites are are feasible, we're gonna ask the chapter. Which ones, which one is the one you really want the houses on? That's the first one. So that's a prioritization. Out of the chapters, well, then we will, we will um assist with with the uh with the processing of the land withdrawal documents. Feasibilities of, and then we also need to have um in that process, we have to work with the grazing committee. And also if we're, if you have a land board, we work with them to get all the uh approved documents and also other documents. I'll go over more of that later on. Then we submit all that N H A. Submit the N H A resolution for land withdrawal, the chapter will participate in the designation and the designing of the community. So the stakeholders. Who's gonna benefit from this? That's kind of stakeholder. So on the chapter side. On the chapter community stakeholders, the chapter officials that make all the uh resolutions and approve it. You have a club committee that helps with the people and and puts together a land use plan. And then you have your grazing official that that meets with all the grazing people and gets uh and and gets feedback from the grazing. Um that they make sure that that doesn't impact them. Auto farm board, it's all the agricultural size. Make sure that they don't, we don't get into that area. So that's the the on the chapter side. That's just some of them. There's more, some, in some cases, there's more, there's more people involved. Auto on auto the tribe, the the actual the Navajo Nation tribe and federal stakeholders. We have, there's other people there that have to give uh give approvals, like the Navajo Land Department. That day, we have to submit all our documentation to the land department so they can finish the master leases and anything like that. Now the whole tribal utility authority, they're in charge of all the utilities. They're the ones that tell us. That this is, this is the utility capacity. If a community is at capacity, they'll let us know and they say. We can't put you to, if you can't put fifty units there because we don't have enough water. So you're gonna have to reduce it to five or ten units. We get a, we get a utility commitment from them. Auto Indian House Service works with with N T, with uh N T U A. Indian House Service does a lot of the designs and the and the uh and and the uh and assessments within communities. We we work with both of those too so that they can uh, we can get a a good utility assessment and and when they're going to increase. That that capacity. Uh I H S uh is is a is a key player in 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 uh. Um in determining when that that community is gonna be getting money from. And then you have the Bureau of Indian Affairs. They're the ones that 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 register the land and they they make them um they put all, they they gather all the documents. And then you have the nomination government process. You have all these like fish and wildlife. You have uh historic preservation. Yeah, and that you have all those offices there. You have to go through water development. And and other other departments there within that, within the nomination government. But looks, make sure that all the environmental documents are are done. Technical assistance provided. Now, this is N H A's side. We assist, like I said, we assist and determine the feasibility of potential sites. Reform feed and perform by performing free visibility site visits. And then we also provide guidance to chapters who request assistance for privateizing site and selecting ones for receiving the planning. We provide the guidance and coordination for other stakeholders. I said, we work with the Navajo Land Department. We work with the community uh development, N T U A, um E P A, and all those. Departments that I had mentioned before, that's where we, that's where we coordinate and we work with them and we uh provide documentation. And then provide a utility capacity analysis for utility provider. We request that from N T U A and I H S. This is how much housing you can put in this area or you can't put, sometimes they'll tell us, most of. They'll tell us, you can't put any houses because you guys, this is that capacity down there. So that's where we have to work with I H S and say, when is this gonna be? When can we put houses here? Of course, I ought and that we, that's how the five year plan comes up. We we talk about these things at the top. And that's how that five year plan comes about and say, okay, this, this community can't have, doesn't have the utility, so let's put them four years down the line. The ones that do have capacity, we'll put them there at the top. You would, oh, that's how, that's how this works. Auto, uh and then and then we also do all the land descriptions for the sites. We do all the paperwork. We do the studies. We do um, we do that, we do all that services to do the that to complete the land withdrawal. And then we, and then, and like I said, that's where we have the archaeological environmental clearance required. Uh technical systems continue right here. We've got, and then once we get all the land, all that's done, we get resolutions. And then we request, then we will request for funding from I H S. That's what we're doing right now, or get taking comments. And we're going and we're gonna do the Indian housing plan and and we're gonna ask for money for planning and we'll ask for money for design. And and for the feasibility studies. And then we also are gonna ask for money for design, for for design services from consultants. So we'll, we'll hire a design consultant. And they'll do all the uh, all the design, design uh documentation. We also coordinate with uh with the consultant and chapters and stakeholders for preparation of 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 the of the. Construction documents. That's what, that's the ultimate goal. Of course, then once we do that, then we request, if we don't get construction money. Then we ask for construction money. Then we get a contract. And then we hire, we'll hire a contractor. And the contractor will, we all, we always look for licensed contractors and license and contractors that are. Financially capable and technically capable to do the project. We don't just pick anybody out of the, out of the blue. We have to make sure that. That that they are capable of doing this project. Um and 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 follow the specifications and drawings that we have. And then we proceed to construction and then after the construction is done, we have an eighteen month uh uh warranty period. Where something, if something happens within the units or even out in the streets. We have the contractor is obligated to go back out there and fix whatever deficiency that that we that we find within that eighteen month. Eighteen month process. Right now, we are, we are actually working with eighteen chapters with initial meetings and site selection. And we were provided a PowerPoint presentation for these, for these chapter houses. We sent letters and emails to chapters to initiate contact and skip a meeting. And uh uh we also have thirty five other chapters that we are also starting to have contact with. So um so over there on the right hand side, you'll see the list of the eighteen chapters that we're working with. Some of these, some of these chapters, we kind of lost uh communication because of the pandemic. But we're re-initiating contact with these chapters and starting to go, I have a dashboard. But uh yeah, I say, okay, what happened to this chapter? You haven't visited this chapter. So. Get back out there and re-initiate your con, your 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 contact. Look out, that's how we're, we're tracking our our uh our progress. Okay, one of the big things that we 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 really rely on is master planning of communities. You know, uh we work with the uh club committees. These are the club committees. These are some of the concerns that they have. They want to have parks and neighborhoods. They wanna, they wanna um make sure that you protect their cultural elements. They want to uh make sure that the drainage ways are protected. We want to uh have uh limited roads and and uh emphasize trails. This, you know, with some of the, some of the chapters, they don't want people driving all over the place, so. We try to work with them to to designate the main road within, within the community, so it doesn't, it doesn't um. It doesn't uh affect the grazing, the grazing areas and our farmlands that are out there. Auto, they wanna make sure that the type of phone do they want? Do they want scattered site? And there's another one I'll show you that's called uh. Um plant pods. Auto, then we have open space. We can also want open space for reparational areas and then they want uh uh plant uh places to where people can uh. Go and walk around, especially for senior citizens. They want that kind of stuff. This is something that N H A did way back in uh uh um. About ten years ago, what we call conceptual planning study. These are conceptual planning studies is for planning purposes. It's it's not a, it's not set in stone. It's just something to help you grow. All these master plans should be visited every one to two years and see if anything's changed, anything has developed. If maybe something else has been, was overlooked and they say, oh, we wanna do this and we wanna do that. No. That's where we, that's where you change it. That's where your club committee comes into play. We can provide this. We did this for all hundred and ten chapters. In the last four days, I've been sending out all kinds of uh conceptual planning studies to the chapters that we. We that we've been, that have been requesting this documentation. We did pass this out to documentation, but as you know, when the, when the, when there's a turnover in chapter officials, but sometimes this gets lost. So we constantly have, we we set it out, we have it on file so we can send these things out. So the types of uh um residential communities, single family, that's uh, that's uh what I call the scattered sites. They want acreage of land. Um that's where you put the house, they uh, that's one or two, they way out there. Where they uh have their 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 sheep or their or their uh. Auto medium density, eh, um plant pods. You see a lot of that, they uh when you go out. So that's a, that's a plant pot. Auto high density eh subdivisions. That's where you have all the uh public rental. And that's uh, that's uh where you get uh a big area of land. So we can have uh um more houses in one area. And inside those subdivisions, you can have multifamily complexes. There's two complexes, a um two people can live, or two families can live in one, 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 one structure. Or three families can live in in one structure, our townhouses. So then you have your apartments. I uh, so you see a lot of those in the in the cities. But we do have some here on the on the Navajo Nation, some recipients, some sub recipients do apartment complexes. But uh yeah, that's that the title of uh residential, residential uh buildings. Well, this is just an example of plant pods. Most of the time is by clan and by family. So that's where they have plant pod, plant pod configuration. And then subdivision, that's this, like I said, uh, this is for all the streets and for all the the parks, sidewalks. And streetlights and all that stuff that, a lot of the young people, they like to live in these areas that, especially the ones that are raising. Um children, but they want the buses to, the bus to go through these subdivisions and pick up the kids. They would, oh, yeah, that's how they, that's how they prefer to live. Of course, before we do all that, we have to do what they call a free free feasibility study. Yeah, then we go out there. We have our so our our planners and our development coordinators. Put a drawing together like that. They say. They put all this, there's houses right here, there's a road right here. And then they fill out that form and say, how far is the water? Is there sewer line in place? Is there power line? Uh what kind of streets are nearby? Auto, then that's when they they go out and site. And then they come back to uh, and then they gather more documentation. This is for the Navajo Nation. They, with this fish and wildlife provides maps too. You put it on a map and then you you put these, all these other other maps that nomination provides. Of course, then we know if they're in a sensitive area, non-sensitive area, or high sensitive area. But uh yeah, and then we document it and say, these are the, this is what we found, this is what kind of plants are out there. This is what kind of slopes are out there. And and flood plain, one of the biggest things we look for flood plain. So we don't wanna put houses up there and and um HUD doesn't wanna put us out, put houses up there. And then they put together the full plan and then they put the, they put that report together. And then these are some of the challenges that we have. We have uh soil pack. There's a lot of clay out there. So it doesn't, it doesn't really hold good for a house. Auto put, like I said. And then the slopes, the side of the slope. Make sure that we don't put houses on the side of a slope and then route out crop, flood hazard, local flooding. Then N E E A, our environmental architectural observation, bi- bi- biological sensitive areas. And um we also look for if there's any illegal dumping sites in that area also and then um. Uh protected forests, farmland, uh what kind of land status are we in? Are we in Navajo trust? Is it fee land? Is it allotted land? We gotta make sure we we talking all that auto grazing permit holder. So let's meet with the grazing, with the grazing now. Committee and and uh making sure that uh we're not infringing on somebody else that's grazing. And then, like I said, utility capacity, service capacity, water, wastewater, water services, electrical, natural gas. Auto which in the access, how we get to that site. And then how much, and what's the distance to maintain that road? Is it, is it a long distance to maintain that road? And then uh, then the other issues that are 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 challenges. These four things right here. This is the biggest thing that we run into outdated infrastructure, water lines that are old. And then the sewer lagoon, we're dealing with, we're dealing with a lot of old sewer lagoons. Today, yeah, it's out of, it's it's out of specifications. You guys gotta uh redo that, redo that lagoon. You guys gotta, uh, redo that, redo that lagoon so we can add more people or to serve more people. Our American Rescue Plan, I said, based on height, but so we're gonna be, we're gonna be using that money to, to, uh, re, re, uh, to improve the water system and also community water system and to, uh, improve the sewer system. Eh, but, uh, we're, we're, we're doing a, a, a partnership with, with, uh, IHS, NTUA and also, uh, NECA. That's kind of where we're gonna be. We're, we're looking at those, those partnerships to make this happen. To improve, uh, that utility infrastructure in certain areas. The ones I see, but in that, eh, that's where we're gonna really be focusing on money, our offer money from. Auto, um, they, I said, but it's not from the tribe. It's, it's actually coming from Nahaz, eh, Nahaz, the offer money, right, they're in that. For all the tribes, auto, I'm not, uh, they give it back. They gave us some of that money. But eh, that's all we're saying is, our biggest problem is utility infrastructure that they, no, no. They would, uh, they base on height, no. And then, uh, other thing we really deal with is grazing issue. We've brought up, Mr. Sochi. A lot of the grazing committees don't want, have, uh, subdivisions out there, even, uh, even to put one house out there. Eh, yeah, yeah, saw the house some because you have to, you have to take a water, water line over there. You have to take a power line over there. Wow, I saw, no, it, 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 it's all over the Navajo Nation. We run into this problem, grazing issue. And then we have, uh, uh, recruited, um, archaeological sites and I saw that in the, uh, part, uh, across the, the Navajo Nation. So they knew where to build. But when you find a good place to build, I started, there's, 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 um, and I saw that, eh, that's, that's where we have that, that's what, that's kind of thing that we always run into out there. Auto, then the, the last one there is land status. Um, the Indian allotment, say, I said, that one is, um, um, but somehow, because you have all of these people from generation to generation, they have to sign it and say, they have to give their okay. And a lot of times, they don't want, so, some will say, okay, and some of them won't, they won't say, no, 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 I don't want, I don't want that to happen right there. And then simple land, the easiest one, the, the most, the less difficult one that we have to deal with besides is, is travel trust, but all, but, but there you run into the grazing, the grazing people there. And then private state and public land, public order lands that are, that are existing out there. So we have to make sure that we're, we have that all documented. Accessibility, this is just examples of accessibility, which in the community, how we're gonna get to these sites. I should, eh, um, um, construction material, I just, that'll get, though, eh, yeah. How we're gonna bring all the equipment in there and everything. But, uh, I mean, yeah, so a lot of times we'll come across a dirt road. The, 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 you'll have a bridge, an old bridge that's been made a long time ago, uh, send day back, yeah. And for us to take over a heavy equipment over that, over that bridge. Oh, oh, it, it's, it's very risky. So we have to look at those kind of things. On-site conditions. We make sure that, uh, we have to stay, we don't wanna be really dealing with illegal dump sites. You see that there's a legal dump site there. A lot of times we'll, we'll come across that. In some cases, we'll clean them up. And, but in some cases, there's got some hazardous materials, gonna cost us a lot more. That's why I said may contain hazardous material, uh. Auto, then there's forest land. We have to get permits to cut, uh, to cut the, cut the, uh, trees to, to make way for utilities. Uh, like, um, power line, go water line. But, uh, yeah, we have to make sure that we, and some of these, uh, some of these trees are, are protected by, by the national, uh, force. And they tell us, you can't cut those trees because they're only, they're, 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 um, very sensitive area, I know. So we have to look at those, those kind of things. On site, and then also, like I said, there's, uh, steep slopes and route out crops. And then, uh, and then congestion of, uh, existing structures. A lot of times when we do this, um, 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 the scattered site, there'll be, uh, one that, like a whole, uh, one of us, that, yeah, nah, nah. We, they want, they want the house right next to it. But sometimes we can't do that because it's, it's a, it's a risk on our side. So we have to make sure that, uh, we have plenty of room to put a, a house in that area so that none of the area around the, none of the structures in that area, um, can, does, they won't get, uh, won't get, um, damaged during the construction. And then, like I said, archaeological sites, that's what we deal with all the time. And then this is, uh, and then flood areas, like I said, we have our own mapping that we do. We can determine, um, we can determine where the, where the flood plains are and we have a border from there. And then we, and that, that tells us that we are, we are, uh, we can put houses within these areas. If you see on there, uh, on this, you see, there's, um, um, there's, there's documentation on there, who lives where, uh, what kind of, um, um, house there is, and then what kind of, uh, what kind of, um, additions are needed or what kind of renovations are needed, things like this. This is where the community can really help us out in, in making this determination. We have this thing called Google Earth. We can teach you how to use Google Earth and make, so that you can put maps together like this and really, and, and show not just only us, but other funding sources. But, and we, there's only one funding source, NHA. There's all these other funding sources that are out there that can help you do all this stuff. And, and by identifying families and what, what their main lead is and putting on a map like this will really, um, um, improve your, 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 your request for, for funding. We put out a, you know, the, without maps, you know, we are in the base of, based, living in Washington, you know, they, not, they, they, um, uh, so all that funding from, let it Washington, based on how they, they, uh, yeah. They like this kind of stuff. But, uh, they have a plan, I know. That's, that's a good way to get money from, from different funding sources. And the states go out with Asia. They, they, they like to see stuff like this. Cool. That's pretty much it. Cool. Actually, uh, um, to land, they, uh, they have any, uh, questions, I'll be here.
Okay, Shila, Mr. Franklin, thank you very much for your presentation. The procedures and then also the, um, the technical aspects as far as, uh, getting property ready for development is what, uh, was shared with you. And so it's a tedious process. And then also, uh, you've seen the, uh, five-year plan with eighteen chapters that have been identified. Is there anybody that has a question or? If you could raise your hand, then I could see you. Okay, I see, um, Bojotito, because, oh, what on, is the grazing official? Uh, that's somebody that, um, that, that has, uh, a lot of, say, in the withdrawal of property. And, uh, those particular chapters that have grazing officials, grazing officials are predominant in trust land area. Uh, allotted land or a lot of, uh, land in New Mexico, the chapter holds the grazing permit. Auto, and some of the chapters, then some of those grazing permits, uh, uh, have been withdrawn and, um, eh, so, does anybody have a question? So we did cover a number of areas, uh, from this morning until now. Uh, we covered the, uh, the basics of the hazda. I don't, that, uh, the Indian Housing Block Grant, I don't, the, the, uh, planning, development and construction aspect of it. And then also some of the concerns that were shared in regards to the, um, some of the developments. Uh, Mr. Franklin did cover that part of his, in part of his, um, uh, presentation. Slash, I don't care. Does anybody have a question? Or questions? Uh, let me put another plug in here for the Navajo, um, Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Uh, Navajo Rental Assistance Program is made available to all tribal members with CIBs regardless if they live on Navajo or off Navajo. As mentioned, we've assisted families that are in Washington DC down to Florida, up to Hawaii, and then across up into the Northwest and then even into Alaska. Uh, so the Emergency Rental Program, uh, basically covers, uh, the individual Navajo family uh, with a CIB residing on or off Navajo, those that may have, um, had difficulty paying their, uh, rental. And then also those that have, uh, that are facing eviction. Uh, it also includes the utilities as well and then the internet. Auto, and the section eight, uh, for the ERAP program, the phone number is nine two eight, eight seven one, two six six zero. Auto, and the, um, the section eight program, those are for individual families that are, um, that, that qualify. Um, eh, 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 I don't know, I don't know, the, the bash program. I don't see any hands up. One more time. This is an opportunity for you to, um, uh, ask any question that you may have on the presentations, um, from this morning on. And US chapters and then also community members or even, um, uh, partners out there, uh, that are community service providers. Uh, this is an opportunity for you to engage with, uh, uh, the process in regards to the Indian Housing, uh, Indian Housing Plan. Thank you very much for your presentation, though, uh, your presence as well. And then also, if you would like to contact, um, uh, Housing Authority, I shared with you a phone number. Uh, if you'd like to get any department or, uh, individual, you can dial nine two eight, eight seven one, two six zero zero and the young lady will connect you.